We're ready.
It'd be good for the new deputy.
There's an electronic version of it. Okay, we'll get started. So David Holshizer is here from the Youth Crisis Center. The executive director is going to give us an update.
Thank you. I wanted to introduce some people to that, okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
I have Cheyenne, she's our program manager and all of our programming. And outside Lisa, she's our finance director at YCC and she's got some more financial information, things like that. If you have a question. And I also invite Paul Prissler, the regional manager for DFS to be here as well. We really need him in and out of the DFS for law enforcement, kids and stuff. If you're okay with it, could Lisa and I sit up here if you can?
Sure, absolutely.
Well, we appreciate you very much having us today and the opportunity to turn on.
Now, now, now the green's on. Now you're good.
There, it's on. Now, do you guys want me to go through the presentation or do you want to do it just kind of on the paper? It's entirely up to you guys because I have no... Someone will... You'll have to enter present mode on this. I'm not sure if I can do it from here or not.
You can do it however you want to do it. We've slated a half hour for you.
Okay. Thank you. Down in the... On the right corner, Tracy, on the bottom, you see that little... Or the cup just up one line? To the left now?
Oh, that!
Yep.
Slideshow.
There you go.
That work in time, Dave?
Let's see. See if it'll let me advance.
I can just press the arrow.
Well, here we go. There we go. So again, thank you for having us. Our entire leadership team, we have more on our leadership team than what's present today. But we just wanted to give you guys kind of an overview of what's currently going on with YCC and some of the challenges that we're facing, I think, more specifically with our court placed kids and what we'd like to do to maybe try to help some of those kiddos out. I appreciate Commissioner Milam for the opportunity to speak with you before the election and you being part of the juvenile services board. And Commissioner Laird, I appreciate you being on that board now and really helping us out in that end of things.
I used wire tissue by the time I left.
It's a good center. We really... We're really wanting to move in a positive direction and I think that you'll see that we're currently working towards that. So our current operations are, we have our crisis shelter wing and our group home wing. Currently, our crisis shelter wing is funded for 10 beds through the Department of Family Services. We are guaranteed through them for 10 beds, 365 days a year at $114 per day for those beds. We are at times able to bump up to 12 because we have actually 12 bedrooms in that particular wing. We have to go through a variance, which that's Paul does our variances for us, to where there are a lot of times we're using the additional 11 and 12 bed because we have a lot of kiddos in. So we get funding through DFS City of Casper. The Natrona County Commissioners as well help out with that in terms of the crisis shelter, just simply because the actual cost for the crisis shelter is right around $230 a day for the crisis shelter costs. So in full transparency, I have also reached out recently to Evansville. We'll be meeting with the town of Evansville and the town of Mills to seek some additional funding to help with some of the kids that they're bringing to the community as well within the crisis shelter. So we move over to our group home wing. This is an actual contract that we have through DFS. So we are able to house up to five kids. This was a set contract that was laid out through WISA, which is the Wyoming Youth Services Association, where a lot of organizations like us take part in that, including like the Yes House, Red Top out of Jackson, Cathedral Home out of Laramie. We're all part of that association and there was a contract that they moved to instead of a per-bed, per-kid, per-day pay rate, they ended up doing a contract. Well, based upon that contract, we're able to house up to five kids with the current funding that we have for that, which leaves us with an additional five beds in that wing that we're not using. We then have an... And we'll go through the picture and show you. We have an unused group home wing, which we are currently working with CWCC to find a way in order to put a program together to help more youth of our community. And we're in the process of finding funding for that program right now. We did apply for an innovation grant through the Department of Health when Wyoming had it through the ARPA funds, but we were unsuccessful in that grant. It was a three-year grant that we asked basically $625,000 for in order to get that program off the ground and running. And we'll kind of go into what that program is here in just a few minutes. But if you're not familiar with the Youth Crisis Center, this is it from an aerial view. We do sit on City of Casper property. When we originally built the facility back... YCC has been around since 1984. It originally opened in '82, but became incorporated in 1984 and has been around on McKinley Street and in the Mills and in the North Casper area. In 2014, we actually built this building. We raised the funds, built the building, city donated the property. We then, I believe, turned the building back over to the city where we actually now pay a rent to the city, which is completely kind of washed, I think, off the books is the way the whole... The whole deal went. But so we have our crisis shelter here, our group home, and then the unused wing, which we do use as a day resource wing. So we have kids in there throughout the day doing educational services because we actually have the Natrona County School District come in and actually teach school at our facility. So we'll have a tutor and an instructor that come in for the ones that can't be transported to school. So we try to ensure that these kiddos are at school, either in our facility or we're transporting them to school. And again, we do have our administrative offices as well. Out back, we've got multiple different things for them. Basketball court, volleyball court that we utilize. And we're looking to do more things with the kids activity-wise because we feel that that is the most positive direction that we need to move in the future is having more activities for these kiddos. So, let's see. So this is our actual crisis wing. There is actually 12 bedrooms in the crisis wing. Off of this is our kitchen. And we've got both the male and female bathroom and laundry facilities. So this is pretty much our major wing with the majority of our kiddos. We move on. This is then our group home wing. A little bit more amenities in there. These kids are with us a little bit longer term. This is a 10-bed facility right here, again, with male, female bathrooms and also laundry facilities and kind of a dining area where they eat more as a family style. This is a typical room that you'll see at the Youth Crisis Center. We are looking to do some more painting, upgrade the rooms in terms of making them a little more colorful, adding things into the room, maybe painting on the ceiling, giving the kids opportunities to post things on walls by putting up some plexiglass to where it's not tearing up the walls or them putting tacks, things like that in the walls. So we're looking at doing that and will be doing that in the near future. Here's our kitchen. We have a full kitchen, which we serve probably about 9,000 meals a year to kids in our facility. We have a very robust food program. We truly believe that the food program is really at the heart of what we are. When a kid comes in, a lot of times they'll come to us with... Several of us have been in law enforcement in here and how many times have you been in a house and all they have is hot dogs? And it's just, when they come to the Youth Crisis Center, we want to make sure that they have a good meal, good meals and opportunity to have, you know, seconds and thirds sometimes. These kids eat a ton. And we've been very blessed with having a very good, fully staffed kitchen to where we serve quality meals. And that's part of the whole programming that we do is that we provide everything for these kids that we can. And so we're very proud of our kitchen. This is our unused wing. As you can see, again, it actually has 10 bedrooms in it, but we've converted one bedroom to an actual family therapy and group therapy room. So this one, we could actually have seven beds. And we'll talk a little bit about the Pathway Home program that we're wanting to do in the near future. And this is our administrative wing. Down this wing, you'll see several different offices and a conference room where most of our admin staff are at. So our current model for our at-risk youth program is, again, we began in 1984 under juvenile justice model. Those of us who... I remember visiting YCC, taking kiddos back in the late '90s, early 2000s. And it was more of a kind of a penalized type facility to where kids really couldn't do much talking, they had to really stay quiet. And it was more of a juvenile justice model. Well, in the last five years, we've really moved that model to more of a clinical mental health substance abuse model because what we're finding is that model is really where we're able to best help kids. So we have hired a therapist. Our goal is to always have a therapist on staff. She does a lot of great things, including our group therapy, individual therapy, as well as we're offering ASIs, juvenile ASIs. So there's very few folks in town that are doing the juvenile ASI, which is the addiction severity indices. We're also doing mental health evaluations. And we're going to be doing MIP classes, parent training, parent therapy and group therapy as well. And really moving more at that clinical focus. And I think there's a real positive reason for that. It helps more kids than just putting kids at like a JDC or a detention center. Plus, we have the flexibility of being able to do that just because we have more staffing available and our building allows a little bit more for that and more of a therapeutic environment than I'd say what a detention center would be. And I would ask this question. I think that Jim... Sorry, Commissioner. The discussions of the juvenile services boards have been that we are truly moving away from that juvenile justice model. Is that something that you guys feel is important in Natrona County? To try to move a little bit differently in that, in a more clinical model? Are we headed in the right direction, I guess, is one of the questions I would have.
So just my thoughts and feelings on this. Feeling, just need your reaction is keeping those kids out of justice system as long as possible. There is a point where it comes into play, but if we can... My thoughts are if we keep them out and develop those habits or those behaviors and integrate them into society, it saves society, the county, so much money. It's so much better for that family, so much better for that kid. The only thing that you can do to help that is just a win-win for us as a county, as a society.
One of the things that we really have been struggling with is... And it was interesting, one of my staff had mentioned, it's like when kids really need help to get DFS involved, and I think several of us in here being part of law enforcement understood that, like you had to wait for a kid to get in trouble, really for DFS to get involved. And here, YCC, we have the opportunity to have parent placements and kind of intervention placements, we call them, in order for kids to come to us before they get in trouble, before a parent gets in trouble and have an opportunity to stay with us and maybe find that ground, get that escape and that opportunity to kind of take a breath before they do get to that point. But we do have kids involved in the court process. And I think that's one of the big reasons why we wanted to touch base with the commission today. But we believe very much in that prevention part of it. And I do believe that that, because we're moving to that clinical mental health model, that that is truly going to be more beneficial for the kids. And what's interesting is that we were talking about it, we talked about it several times, is that we're seeing kids now with not only mental health issues, but substance abuse issues. And that age seems to be getting a lot younger. I mean, we're starting to see them at like 11 and 12 with even substance abuse issues. And then you put that on top of the fact that maybe dad and mom have some mental health issues or substance abuse issues, and it just continues to layer on top of these kids. And I think that's where being more of a clinically-minded organization and going in that direction is going to much more benefit the kids of our community. So we are moving, we have a strength-based practice program that we use along with trauma-informed care to help our youth worker staff, our case management staff and our overall programs to interact with youth. We really want to be positive. We want to be, give these kids, you know, we're moving away from a tiered program in our groups homes where they achieve a tier or they can go back a tier. We really want to give the kids the wins of the day and maybe some immediate consequences that aren't necessarily as stringent as what a tiered program would cause. So we want them to have more wins in their life and see more positives than negatives because really, these kids don't see a lot of positive. And that's really where we want to go. So since June of 2021, final change has been made to move fully to a clinical model versus juvenile justice model. So that is where we're at. We've committed to making sure that we have a lead therapist and at least two case managers on staff to support all of these programs. And that is our commitment to the community, that is our commitment to our donors and the government entities that help us with our efforts. So for the future of the Youth Crisis Center, we want to continue to expand our clinical services. We seem to do a very good job of kind of being... People know who we are, parents know who we are and they come to us. And if we can expand our clinical services, we are going to be able to provide that help because there is a true gap in therapy services in Casper, Wyoming. We're seeing less providers, we're seeing less people seeing kids. The wait lists are getting longer and we're not recruiting enough new college students into the Casper area with counseling degrees. Our vacancy, we had a vacancy and we put a lot of effort in filling that vacancy. We had it filled in about three months. But we had to put a lot of resources into getting our therapist on hand because there's just not many out there. There's not many licensed therapists, there's not as many licensed clinical social workers out there. So we're very grateful and thankful to have Terri Heisey, who is our therapist on staff. And she's done a great, great service for us at YCC. So as we look at the Pathway Home program, this is the partnership that we were talking about with the unused wing. We're currently seeking, we're trying to figure out the funding part of it. So we are working with the Department of Health, the director, Stefan Johansson, in regards to that, to see if maybe there's a way that we can utilize that wing as kind of a bounce-back program for kids coming from out-of-state treatment or even in-state treatment, but inpatient treatment long-term. Because right now, these kids will come home and they get dropped right back in their home environment. We want to be able to provide a program along with CWCC because they have the medical knowledge, they have the ability to handle medications, things like that, when they come from maybe a sandy Utah facility. They come back home and they stay with us at YCC for a time period, maybe three months, six months, however long it takes to slowly integrate them back into the system. And one of the discussions that we talked about is, say, the kid's not ready to go to school full-time. Maybe they do two days at school and they do three days at YCC. You know, slowly integrate them back into life instead of putting them right back in that system where they came from. The other part of that program that we were adamant about when we do find the funding for this is we want to ensure that the parents are part of this. So if your kid, if you want your kid in this program, we need you to take part in as a parent. Parent therapy, parents, parent classes and parent involvement, basically. That's a huge part of it. So that is not part of the request today is the funding for that. But just know that that is a program that we truly want to have at YCC because we have the room, we have the infrastructure, we have the food program, we have the programming, and we really want to move that way. So expand our current location by adding a new building later on in the future, five-year plan for those actual therapy services and offices for group therapy, family therapy, programming, outpatient treatment services. That is more five years down the road. We'd love to have that building built behind us. So when we get into the urgent need that we're here today with is that we are currently accepting and honoring court placed kids either through district court or circuit court. And they continue to place kids in our custody long-term. These are kids that are not assigned to our actual group home program. These are kids that, for some reason, the judge feels that they don't want to go to JDC. They'd much rather house them at YCC. So they actually court order them to our facility. Now, because we don't have the room on the group home side, they have to be on our crisis shelter side, which in turn makes them... That is a much more stringent program because some of those kids are going through some immediate crisis needs and we can't open it up and allow them to kind of go out of the building, things like that. So they are in our crisis shelter for a long period of time. And that uses up part of those 10 licensed beds, licensed beds that we have, which prevents law enforcement, parent placements, things like that from coming in and being able to drop more kids off. So we're always trying to do a shuffle to see if we can get kids in, get kids out. Sometimes the parents struggle because we have to ask a parent placement, come get a kiddo so that we can accommodate a court-ordered kid. So when it, you know, as of, when I sent the presentation, as of January 25th, we had five court-ordered placed kids in our crisis shelter. And that accounted for five of the 10 crisis beds, which are, should be different than these longer-term court-ordered beds. So we also had three crisis beds assigned to DFS for protective custody, which those are more of an appropriate place for the crisis shelter. But when you add everything together, that left us with two beds that we had available for kids. Unless we want to push that envelope of having 12 kids on unit, we try... We try not to because we're not, we are not funded for 12. But most importantly, we're licensed for 10 and we have to have a temporary variance for up to 12. So and on January 23rd, a few days before, put the presentation together, we had six court placements and four DFS protective custody placements, which means that we had, our whole facility is full with placements, not necessary parent placements or those emergency needed beds for kids. So and one thing that we are seeing is that these kids are with us for 45 days and even longer. We've had one that we've had to file for variance and Paul was lucky. I appreciate him giving me the variance on it. We have one that was waiting for a bed at, I think, St. Joe's. And that particular youth was with us well over 90 days. And the reason being is because the in-state treatment facilities and even the out-of-state treatment facilities are so far out for treatment that kids have to stay with us because they either can't go back to the home, the home isn't safe, or just many different factors that leans the judge in order to place them with us here at YCC. So that's kind of the urgent need. We're committed to helping. No matter what happens, we are going to continue to do our program. We're going to continue to help based upon what we can fund and what our ratio staffing is. But the one thing that they ask, that we're asking, is to help us with what we call our bridge program, which help us utilizes the remaining five beds on our group home side, not our crisis shelter side, but our group home side in order to provide placement for those extended court-placed kids that are going to be going on to that next level of treatment, be it either an inpatient treatment or some kids are going to the boys' school, some are going to the girls' school. But we see this as a true opportunity to extend programming to these kids. Therapy services, group therapy, life skills. Life skills is huge because right now, we do what we call a KC life inventory or KC life skills assessment when they come in. And that tells us whether or not, I mean, we ask questions like, do you know how to do laundry? Do you know how to cook? Do you know how to open an email? Do you know... It has all sorts of different questions that you would think someone in like a high school age range would have an understanding, at least a basic understanding. And a lot of these kids don't have any of it. And so we do the life skills training, parent interaction, most importantly, the case management services. They continue the ability to actually attend school in person, not via, you know, confinement jail or something from the detention center. Volunteer activities where we're getting these kids out in the community and more community involvement, going to the YMCA, the rec center, things like that. Currently, because of the design and because we have to place those kids in our crisis shelter, we have stricter rules and programming, which doesn't allow for those kids to do that. So I think we're missing a window of 45 days, three months, four months, where these court-placed kids could be getting additional programming had we were able to put them in our group home and utilize those five beds. You know, we have the room and that's where we're asking for the help. We're not unwilling to open those up. It just becomes tough with the funding aspect of it for us. So proposals for the commissioners is utilize the current YCC program and the partnerships to their fullest extent and leverage the state money from DFS and the Department of Health to help more youth. Again, we have a very robust food program, which is important to these kids. A lot of these kids don't have that nutritional food or the most they get is that lunch or breakfast at school. Go home and there's nothing. Life skills training, strength-based approach to working with youth, individual and group therapy opportunities. And that can be, if they already have a therapist, we transport them to therapy. We don't make them do therapy with us. If they already have someone established, we will get them. We'll transport them to that therapy and ensure that we're doing in our program what that therapist is needing us to do. Educational services, planned activities, accountability and then case management for the overall tracking and progress. And this can be for DFS, giving them the updates and also the courts, giving courts an update how the kiddo's doing. So with that, hopefully, help funding to utilize a fully licensed unused beds in our group home. Our ratios are one to six youth. So if we were to have more youth than that, we'd have to have two youth care workers in there for a one to 10 ratio, or we'd have to have a two to 10 ratio. So we have to add additional staff. Most importantly is this, that is a requirement by DFS licensing. We can't go, we can't circumvent that at all. DFS licensing, because we are fully licensed, we have to follow the rules and guidelines that they provide. So we want to try to leverage the current DFS group home contract, which is, and we'll go through the numbers, which allows us to take full advantage of that contract, which alleviates some of the costs for potentially the county if you're willing to look at this and consider this. Because we feel that leveraging is the best way to do it. Kind of piggyback on those services that the state is paying the majority for. Utilize case management service with helping report back to judges on the youth's progress or regression and assessments. Allows opportunities for us to have ASIs, mental health evaluations because we can do that all in-house. A lot of times, those things when kids go to out-of-court placement or out-of-state placements or inpatient treatment, they want those evaluations and we can do those evaluations at YCC. So kind of the bottom line, the funding requests that we're looking potentially for is, you know, agreeing a contract, a grant, some, however the terminology would be. But help us maybe use those five unused group home beds specifically for the court-placed youth that we're seeing from district court and circuit court. And really, the cost for us is minimal because we want to keep... It's just about adding staff and piggybacking on the already programs that are there. You know, we're good with the food program. We're not adding additional funding for foods. We're not adding additional costs for the therapy, things like that. We've got that. We're just asking for a smaller amount potentially to help us add youth care workers to meet the ratio staffing that we need to meet. So use the current DFS group home contract to maximize the services, including our food services, case management services. Currently, right now, what we get on a yearly contract or basically a per-youth, per-day for the five beds is $161. Our current cost for what it would cost to have a youth in the group home is, we broke down the numbers for January, and it is $265 a day, roughly $265 a day per youth to have those kids in our group home for all the services that we provide. So we're just really looking at an opportunity to provide more beds for the community, but also helping us with the staffing that we need to staff it. Because if we don't have the staff, we can't do it. And that's the biggest request, I think. So and if you have any questions about numbers, I did. Lisa is great with the numbers. She's been a true blessing to our facility to have. And I thank Cheyenne for the opportunities that she's been doing with our programming. And I do thank the partnership with Paul and Becky and Lori. They've been great with us with DFS. We really do work well together in terms of trying to do our best for these kids. But there are a lot of kids who need a lot of help. So with that, I'll kind of open it up for questions in regards to what we can do or anything you guys might have in regards to it.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
If we can't help Natrona County children, we can't help anybody.
Anybody else have any other questions? Peter?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. It seems like we saw the DFS or a DFS contract recently, just as part of our regular packets. What is the possibility of going back to DFS and getting additional funding so that you can bump up that half-capacity in the group home?
So we had meetings with Corinne, who, Corinne Schmidt, is that her last name? Corinne Schmidt, sorry. She is the director of DFS. And coming out of the legislature, they actually increased, I believe, about $2 million, but they committed half of that to the tribal agencies in order to help them. So that $1 million is going to be spread amongst 23 different counties, which is going to make that probably a pretty minimal gain for us. We have approached them several times with basically what it costs for salary, what it costs for, you know, why we need to see some of the increases to help with that. you know, why we need to see some of the increases to help with that. And we've kind of gotten back that this is what you're, this is what we have. During the COVID pandemic, we actually lost three percent in regards to our group home contract. They have since put that back in and added an additional three percent to the cost of the group home. But what we showed you on there, the hundred and sixty-one dollars, hundred and sixty-two dollars per day is the cost. So we have approached them. We actually have our executive director, the WISA members, that has gone and made those requests. We've had meetings as a group with Corinne, Corinne Schmidt, the Director of Department of Family Services. And it, they're on a very fixed budget as well. One of the comments that, there were actually several comments from state legislators that we, when we approached them last year and this year in regards to funding, one of the, and those comments basically are is we're asking that you speak with your local jurisdictions for additional funding as well. And that's why we've made an effort, because we've never, Mills and Evansville have not put into the crisis shelter and we're taking kids from Mills and Evansville. So we are actually putting that on the table and going to ask them for funding to help us with the crisis shelter. The group home is a little bit different program and we're seeing, we are seeing the increase in the court placements. So, and from district and circuits. So I don't know how to, I want to continue to have the opportunity to have emergency placements if we need it. And, and we do for parents and law enforcement, but when we're full, we're full and that's, that's the hard thing. I hate turning people away.
I, I should have started by saying, thank you for coming today. We appreciate it. This is a lot of good information for me personally. You mentioned two hundred and seventy-some dollars per day.
Two hundred and sixty-five dollars in the average day.
And that's for?
That's for a group home. That's per day, per kid, per bed.
But you're only getting a hundred and sixty-two from the state?
Yes, so the rest of the money is we're making up through robust fundraising that we've done, grants, things like that. So we are doing our absolute best to do grants, to do fundraising efforts. We've been, we've been fairly successful at that, but that again is having to address some of the other issues with the hundred and fourteen dollars a day of the crisis shelter. We haven't seen an increase since 2012 in regards to that. And that, and the crisis shelters run as two hundred and thirty dollars a day for kids. So we have to make that additional money up through. The county kicks in quite a bit and I thank you guys for your contribution this last year. You guys stepped to the plate and knocked it out of the park with helping us in the crisis shelter. You might be aware of some of the, the August things with one cent funds. I thank you, Chairman Freo, for your support on, on that. Where, you know, we, we utilize the grants from that one cent from the city to help us with our operations as well. And that's why we're also looking at Mills and Evansville for them to kick in additional funding for that crisis shelter because there is such a big gap. But this is, this is an opportunity to provide a service that hasn't been there and leveraging that, I guess, is kind of the question.
And we're about out of time. And I hate to monopolize, but I've kind of done that before, so it's nothing new to these gentlemen. In any event, you know, it seems to me that if you're getting paid a hundred and sixty-two but your cost is two sixty-five, that there is a conversation to continue to have with DFS. And we might be able to encourage some additional investment on their part. But I think you're seeking from the commission a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars?
Yeah, in a, in a yearly grant that we could potentially, you know, to handle those additional group home court placement beds. And it wouldn't be, if you were to look at it for this year, certainly whatever the commission could help us out with this year, but maybe looking at potential for next year as well.
Of, of the, you, you've got some pending requests from Mills and Evansville?
Yes.
Or you're, you're going to have those?
Yes.
Would they be contributing to this hundred and thirty-seven or is that above and beyond?
No, this is specifically for the court placed kids that we're having in our center. So district court and circuit court. These are when the judges actually say, you're going to go to, you're going to go to YCC versus JDC. It seems to be that's the place where they're going because they can place them outside the home. But I, I know DFS is, and not by any fault of anyone, but it's hard to come by foster families for kids that age. I think that's one of the biggest struggles that we're seeing in the community is foster families just aren't coming to the table with, with kiddos that are, you know, ages eleven to eighteen, so.
Are you getting funding when the judges are sending them to you instead?
No. And we don't, yeah. Yeah, that, that again falls back to a state issue and, and they're just, they're putting those, they're, they're placing them with us. And I don't know if, I don't know who would even approach about that, I guess would be one of the questions, maybe.
So Representative Washington is Chair of his committee.
Okay.
And over this, once they get out of what they're doing down in Cheyenne, he plans on having several learning or classes for his committee. And this would be one of those that I think he needs to know about.
Perfect.
With him being on judiciary and stuff like that. So I'd definitely reach out to him and go through this with, see if you can do this with his group and, and it's more specific to the courts and their placements and how much it's costing and what's going on there. Because he is very interested in that when I talk to him about it.
Yeah. You know, and I don't, I don't, I think our judges, our local judges just feel that it's a great place to put kids rather than JDC. And I would certainly agree with them. I just don't know if they understand fully, you know, that the mechanism for funding isn't there and that the more kids they place in our facility to court placement, the more, the less opportunity we have to help other kids and turn kids away from the facility that are in that more need of crisis, more emergency crisis.
Part of the educational component too for those judges. If they don't know what it's doing or it's limiting the community to react to different things with them stacking the kids in there, then.
Yeah, absolutely.
Maybe we need to talk, or y'all need to talk to Paul, you need to talk to the judges.
You know, and I, I think their heart's in the right place in trying to keep kids out of jail. I really do.
I agree, it's just, yeah.
Because where do you put them when you don't have any, when, when there isn't room places, so.
So, so it's been a minute and I don't recall exactly what funding the county is providing currently, either through one cent or, or just in, in general in our budget. What's the amount?
Fifty thousand.
So we get fifty thousand a year to, and that goes into our crisis shelter to help with that crisis shelter. So we don't, because it's part of the county, we, we, that kind of covers the barn on the Midwest, Edgerton, those areas. Again, the, the ask for Evansville and Mills hasn't been done. And that, that came along because our legislators are asking us for more help from our local bodies. They're saying, basically, the, the one, the one major comment that we got is that, you know, the local communities need to be helping more with their local community. And so therefore we are asking Evansville and Mills in the next, we have a meeting next week with Evansville and I think a meeting next week with Mills as well to present to their town councils in order for additional funding. But, you know, this particular ask is more particularly for those court placed kids that we're seeing that would either go to JDC or YCC. So, and I don't know is, I don't know what capacity JDC is at right now. I don't know if there, what number of kids are taken, but we seem to take more and more, so.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Does?
Have you, have you all advised the judges that they're sending your children that you have, you're not budgeted for?
The answer to that is no. Maybe that, that has to be my bad because from a lot, when prior, you just didn't really tell, you didn't bring those things up to judges. I think that was kind of one of those things that we used to do and try not to tell a judge those things. But I would, I, certainly I can. I mean, if that's the direction the commission would.
Do you think you should do that?
Yeah. But in all honesty, I don't know where it will fall on their radar. Because we are a resource, they see us as a resource for these kiddos.
Well, they have some ability to get funding, but if they don't know, then, and I think that all, if you had any duty at all, the only duty I would see is that you have to tell them there's no funding for that, how can they help you get some?
Okay, absolutely, sir.
And then, then the ship goes for them.
David, we're out of time, but I do have one question for you.
Absolutely, sir.
I know you haven't been, it hasn't been that much time that's gone by, but pivoting from a juvenile justice model to a more of a substance abuse and mental abuse, do you see, has it changed the repetitive clients coming back? Do you see a difference in that or not?
You know, I see that we do have repetitive clients, we do. But when we see those repetitive clients, it more, what we're seeing is kids that come in that have fallen away from the therapy, like when we get them set up with community resources. So when they come to us and we get that clinical model basically up and running again, it gets them settled down to where they can exit out of our facility. But yeah, we are seeing that it is more beneficial because the kids that normally won't really talk or say much or, or having behavioral issues, we're able to get those settled down for the most part. So I, I do think it's working. But we need to, again, their community is struggling with providers. And I think that's why we're really stepping forward and saying this is, this is the direction that most youth service organizations need to be going to is more of a clinical model and mental health model, because it's, it's what these kids are struggling with, so, very much so.
Okay.
Thank you so much for your time. We absolutely appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mr. Chairman, Honorable Commissioners, and this is good. My name is Alexandria Wilkinson. I'm a partner at Port of Mio-Hercrone and Howard. And with me is Brian Peterson. I think you probably all know him. He's been instrumental in managing the audit for the county in, for a number of years. And I also have Seth Corson with me. He is a manager at Port of Mio-Hercrone and Howard. And he also has been doing a lot of review work, so just kind of brought the, the main team. And would like to kind of discuss a few things that we had joined the audit and then answer any questions if there are.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So I would imagine Mr. Martinez has provided you with the financial statement, the audit for fiscal twenty-two, as well as our communication to those charged with governance in regards to our responsibilities for the audit, the scope, compliance with all ethic requirements, significant risks that we identified, the various quantitative aspects of the audit, that significant accounting policies and accounting estimates. There is also a pretty lengthy list of general entries that were posted, but it, it may seem like a large number of general entries that have been posted, but the county maintains they're bought on pretty much cash basis. So financial statements are on accrual basis, modified accrual for the fund statements and full accrual for statement of net position. So there are a number of general entries that need to be posted in order to bring them to the appropriate reporting levels. And also we have a representation letter. So we have issued an unqualified opinion, which is the opinion that everybody would want to have. We didn't have any, and we had one finding, I will, actually two findings. I will discuss that maybe at the end. Just wanted to highlight a few things that definitely were different from last year that I think maybe some answers were already, maybe the items were discussed. But the number one thing, our illustrious standard setters come up with constant new things. So we had implementation of GASB eighty-seven, statement number eighty-seven, which is a lease standard. So that has made some changes in the county's financial statements due to this implementation. We obtained leases and various calculations from Mr. Martinez. So the county, the lease standard relates to leases payable and leases, as a less see as a less saw, leases payable, leases receivable. The county has a few leases payable that are required to be recorded as liabilities, but they were not significant. And actually, we did not determine that they really need to be recorded because they were not, they would impact the financial, the reader of the financial statement significantly. However, the leases receivable are pretty significant. They were significant for the county. There's, I think the biggest lease that needed to be booked was the lease with the Oklahoma Hospital, right Brian?
Right.
Yes, that, so if you were to look at a financial statement to page sixteen, the lease receivable is recorded two point nine million dollars. So that's over, I think, fifty years. That's the, the, so the requirement is to record it for the term of the lease, present value, the dollars, and then, and then record a unavailable revenue sort of. So it's not recorded as a revenue, it's both a balance sheet items. And then every year the payments are later recorded and the certain portion of expenses recorded. So that's kind of a bit different. This was a significant difference for the airport, which is the county's component unit, because the airports, the airport has lots of leases. So a lot of those leases had to be recorded in a similar manner. So that's sort of the biggest change. The other, also a change is not necessarily this year a significant impact, but it has to do with SF sixty and the property taxes. So, you know, the, the county is collecting payments from the mineral producers now on a monthly basis, but the levy happens after the fiscal year end. And if, and also the, the levy for mineral producers is set basically a year. So the fiscal, let's say twenty-two levy is based on a twenty-one production. Fiscal twenty-three levy is set on twenty-two production. So when the producers are making payments, you know, that's really recorded as, they are basically prepaying it. That's kind of the way we are looking at that according to government accounting standards and revenue recognition. So this potentially will have an impact down the road. We might be reviewing that with the DOR when maybe, but at the moment, the revenue recognition for those property taxes that were collected ahead are recorded as a deferred revenue. That's on page sixteen. There is unearned revenue for a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. So that's kind of the, I think, the, the bigger item. Clearly, the county still has the refundable advance. That's the ARPA money, fifteen million dollars. That's recorded as a, you know, a liability right now because the funds have not been spent and no determination has been made. So the other kind of a, it's, it's the, it's a county's liability, but it's, the commissioners may recall in several years ago, everybody had to record GASB sixty-eight, which is a pension liability, unfunded pension liability. So there are a lot of components to the net pension liability and it's not, it's a liability that needs to be recorded because the county is part of the cost sharing plan, Wyoming Retirement System. And it's not that county will ever have to necessarily pay that liability and write a check, but by, because the county is a participant, there, and if there is an unfunded liability, the county will have to, the rates are increasing. And as the county knows, the commissioners know, that the rates for the Wyoming retirement have been increasing. The reason I'm bringing that up is because the Wyoming retirement fiscal year end is December and their actuarial calculations are based on, you know, how much the value of their assets. And they have lots of assumptions and different kind of, it's, all the numbers are based basically on the audited financial statements from Wyoming retirement as well as their actuarial reports. But the, the big difference that kind of happened in, for fiscal, for the county's fiscal year in June thirtieth, twenty-two, is that law enforcement pension, there's been several, some changes made and various assumptions. That liability has increased significantly. So overall liability for that plan, unfunded liability, I think, went from what, eighty million, I think, to two hundred and eighty million. But then the, the county clearly is taking the share of that. So looking, I think the easiest way to look at would be is the page seventy-eight, which kind of shows law enforcement pension liability, the proportion of the net, net pension liability where it's. where it's $12,700,000 this year, it was $3 million last year, $4 million in 2020, but was $11 million in '19. So it has to do with, you know, their assumptions, valuation of the assets, but that kind of is a much bigger number, so I thought I'd mention that. And finally, I mentioned that there were two findings. On page 124 is sort of, it's a summary of independent auditor's results, so that's kind of a nice report card, you can always kind of look at that that way, we kind of like to refer it that way. It says that, you know, that we issued an unmodified report, whether we had any material weaknesses or any significant deficiencies. So we did not identify any material weaknesses, which basically kind of means is that in the process of preparing financial statements, you know, there were errors that, there would have been errors, that the management was not able to identify those errors, they had some control deficiencies and would not be able to identify that. But we have identified significant deficiency, and that had to do with, with the assessor's office, and I think that maybe everyone is aware of it, but there were errors that were made while entering the value in the state assessed property in the assessor's system, and the errors totaled about $155 million. So while we were agreeing the assessment certified by the state by the utilization to the total tax rule that was imported by the treasurer's property tax system, we know that there were significant, there were significant variances and, you know, and I think then those were explained, Brian kind of worked quite a bit with that, with the assessor's office. I think that now the errors will be corrected in the future, but it was a significant error, excuse me?
Was, sorry. Sorry, was that undervalued, or where did that deficiency come in? I mean, I'm following what you're saying, but I just...
It was, it was overvalued. What happened is they, as they were hand inputting the report from the state, because my understanding is usually the state will upload the numbers, but there was an error, so they had to hand input the numbers. And the person who was hand inputting them was grabbing totals instead of, for some individuals, for some owners, instead of their piece, they were grabbing totals.
Okay, so the assessed value was showing that $155 million over what it actually should have been?
Right, what was, over what the state had.
Right, okay, okay, that's, I knew there was a, I knew there was a discrepancy there, but I just wasn't sure exactly where it'd come from, so.
Mr. Chairman, did you identify who was doing that? Exactly the person's name that was making those entries?
I did not, I know it was someone in the assessor's office was handing put the numbers, and then it was corrected. Once it was caught by the state, then they went in and fixed all those errors. But no, I did not inquire of the actual, the person who was inputting it, just...
Would that be something we should know?
Let me just suddenly answer that. I think the issue here really is, is that whether it is, you know, cash disbursements or cash receipts or anything, you need to have a system of internal control, so that we all, people make mistakes, so a person was keying in and made a mistake. There should be a second, some review of what, of the input of the data. There was no review of the input of the data. Had there been a review, then that would have been caught, because, you know, the person maybe should have reviewed their own work, but sometimes, you know, just may not see it. So I think that that's, that's kind of our biggest, you know, issue, our, one of our, you know, when we are studying an audit, we evaluate various systems and see if there are controls, and that was something we have mentioned, actually, last year there were some errors, and we had a management letter in regards to, and I think it was a similar issue, wasn't it Brian? The year before was a little different issue.
Yeah, no, it wasn't the same type of issue, but there were changes made between the, the time that it was approved by the state and when it went to the treasurer, there were changes made, and they, and they've been able to, in the past, provide details of what made up those changes. There were just changes made in those timeframes. This is the first time that I've seen this instance occur.
This kind of, this was a very large magnitude.
I mean, obviously it's very significant, but...
Can I jump in Alexandra? Oh, I'm sorry if you can't hear me on the microphone, but back to what Alexandra was explaining, and we mentioned about importing the process there, because when she started talking about the findings, we had talked about material weakness and significant deficiency, and the criteria for kind of meeting that material weakness versus significant deficiency, or even lower than that and becoming just like a management comment letter, is kind of falls back to like the process and the dollar value associated with the error. So like you mentioned about maybe who specifically had created that error, the material weakness isn't so much about the error and who did it themselves, but that there wasn't a process, like Alexandra said, to catch that issue, and then the large dollar value associated with that issue, right? So if one person was to input it here in the assessor's office, to prevent that being material weakness, there should be a review process for someone who would have caught that large dollar value error, does that make sense? So while the error was caught then by the state and corrected before there was issues with like billing and collection, that's where we end up with a material weakness. And I think we'll go next to an item that we have like as a significant deficiency. So where we're now looking at a dollar threshold, there's just not a process to prevent that error from being this big, or, you know, maybe a little bit smaller, so. Just as an example, there are an explanation of that material weakness versus significant deficiency on that.
Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate that clarification, and that this $155 million error was caught before any tax notices went out.
Yes.
So that's good, but have, has anyone from your firm had an opportunity to visit with the new assessor to go over, you know, what protocols or processes she could put in place? And I know that can be our job too, but I didn't know if you had already reached out to her.
Not yet, I think.
Not yet, we haven't. I will, before the next year's audit, we will, we'll meet with her, because I, I worked with Renee significantly on this issue, figuring out what happened and finding, making sure everything was corrected. And I know, I know Tammy from when she was here before, the previous assessor, and so I will, we will make that contact, but that has not been made yet.
Yeah, this page 125 is, would be a good one to provide to her and her office. Thank you.
Right, so, so right, so it's, so and the second finding relates on page 126, it relates to a single audit issue at the Department of Health. So we usually, every year, have to audit several federal funding streams that, and for the most part, Department of Health receives quite a significant amount of funding, so it ends up that we review that. So the issue here is that, you know, they normally, just one of the compliance requirements is that they need to verify that person that they contracted with or hired, it wasn't suspended and debarked. Basically, federal government does not, has a list of people they don't want to do business with. So if you, and then I think that they have verified that, but they were not able to provide in documentation that that really has happened, so we report it as an internal control issue, because actually, you know, they, the person, the individual or the company that the purchases were made was not, you know, there was no issue with that, they were not on a suspended barred list. However, they, there should be a control to verify that, this is a requirement. One of the ways to kind of do that, to prevent this, is to have a certain language in contracts, and that basically states that, you know, that the entity is certifying, I'm not suspended and debarked, and that is allowed. We also kind of noted that some of the contracts were potentially missing certain language, and that kind of encompasses this whole finding. I think we recommended, and Brian has extensively talked with, I think Kelly, right, for the Ms. Kelly?
Oh, no, Anna Kinder.
Anna Kinder, okay. They need to just discuss that, you know, they don't, they don't make these kind of purchases, they have, that's pretty large purchase, the checking of someone who's not on suspended and debarked list is for contracts over $25,000, so it's a pretty, you know, much larger, they usually don't have, you know, that large of a contract that they, they enter into, and it doesn't happen often, so I think they forgot they have a policy, but I think they were not exactly following, you know, what they needed to do. And Brian has discussed with Anna, I think Kelly was another, yeah, sorry, it was another, we discussed it on another. So I think they just, we just suggested that maybe they, whatever contracts they have, that they have legal, you know, the county attorney reviewed them, made sure that all the required federal clauses are there, there is a list of them. Unfortunately, some of them may not necessarily apply, but the federal government says, if I'm giving you a grant, you need to include all those clauses. So that I think might help, you know, and that was the second finding. We had a very similar finding, actually almost identical, last year in relation to, was it CAP? Yeah, so the same thing, they don't, they, I think, were buying the mobile unit during COVID, they kind of, you know, they should have also verified that, you know, those are kind of some of the requirements that are, that are put in place, you know, when we are auditing federal funds. So that was the other item. And we had a management letter that I'm assuming Commissioners are also in, received, and just two items, one relates to Tracy, and she says, just write me up. I think it's, it's one of the, it has to do with bank reconciliation, and we kind of changed the language a little bit. I mean, Tracy prepares all the bank reconciliation, they're all done and everything, but I don't think there is a sudden review, isn't that? So we kind of are recommending that that sudden review, or maybe Tracy trains someone else, and then she does the review, but, you know, the, the kind of, the doer and the reviewer, you know, would be, I think, kind of important. So we've been writing that, but all is prepared. And the, and the other finding has to do with clerk of the district court. We've spent quite a bit of time last year helping them out to make sure that all the reconciliations are done properly, and that has all happened. They implemented a lot of different recommendations that they fit their systems. One of them that they, it's been sort of have, delinquent for quite some time, and they've been working on it, there is a number of checks that are outstanding from years past. It's possible, but, but I worked with them, that some of those outstanding checks are really not outstanding checks, just they are trying to work, it takes quite a bit of time to go through the system, make sure that, or maybe we, they basically, I think, in many instances, there was a, they issued a check, they had to void the check and reissue, but they didn't essentially in the system void that initial check. But if you didn't void it and you didn't verify, they kind of don't know. So they are still working on that, and that was our other management comment that we issued.
What's the approximate total amount of outstanding?
About $200,000, something around that, about $200,000. But I think that initially, when they started working last year, was about a half a million, so I think they've worked through quite a bit. And I think it had to do with when they changed banks, I think in the way past, they reissued, and, and I think they've had some issues with the POSI system that was used, you know, so there were reconciliations between those two systems, and they are sending checks that were some issues. I think I did, is there, did I forget anything, Brian, or?
I don't think so.
No?
Okay.
Are there any questions?
Or comment?
Counselor, Commissioner Larry.
Thank you. I would, I would just request, if you can do this, is that you get with the assessor and discuss that problem immediately. Because there, as you know, there were a lot of issues with the assessor's office.
Okay.
And so I think the sooner that the new assessor knows what this problem is, and these kind of problems bother me as a lawyer, as whether they're negligence or intentional, either one, I don't like either one.
Sure.
So I, I would hope that this can be brought to her attention with full information about that, because she assumes some employees as well, and I think she would, she, it's imperative she know this right away, is my basic opinion.
Certainly, we will follow up again. I think Brian has mentioned that he's already discussed with, well, with Renee, but the new assessor, that we, yeah, with deputy.
Tammy Salisbury.
Right, Tammy Salisbury is the new assessor, so.
Personally about this.
We will follow up, and maybe we'll report to Mr. Martinez, and he can report to the Commissioners, and if you'd like, we can come and report that again.
Moving that up to you all to get the right message across.
I was just gonna ask if, if the board accepts the audit report annually in, at its meetings, like some organizations do, you know? Okay, I'm kidding.
Well, they need a few more accounting courses to do that intelligently, and that includes me. But this was an audit, and this, when I was on the City Council, we requested an audit of the event center over several hundred thousand dollars that seemed to be, that had vanished. So when the accountants came in, they at first announced that it wasn't an audit. What they did is they just looked at the books, which is a major difference. Isn't that true?
Well, I'm not sure what do you refer by looking at the books, you know, I mean, depends what we are doing, there is, but the audit is, you know, so we are auditing the financial statements, and so if you look at the opinion, it's in all material respects. So we are verifying that their assets exist, that they are accurate, they are, you know, properly presented, you know, we are looking at the estimates that potentially are used, so that's kind of when I refer to this letter. I mean, when, I mean, you know, we can do other different procedures, you know, and, but yeah, audit, you know, looking, we are not looking at 100% of transactions, but we have procedures to decide whether, you know, we look at cash, that yes, that really is an accurate number, you know, and, or fixed assets, or receivables, or things like that. So I don't know what they were exactly referring by that, making that statement, but...
Well, there's a difference between an audit and just a general review of the books.
Sure.
So what disturbs me here, though, is that a huge stake like this wasn't caught in-house. And so what would be your recommendations then, so that doesn't happen again?
You're talking about the assessor's office, right?
Yes.
So our recommendation is basically what we were just discussing a few minutes ago, is that there has to be a second review of somebody's work. So when I am, you know, when verifying completeness of the data, so for example, when they have to, they are receiving a data file from the state, and they are importing that data file, that they verify that whatever they've imported, this is the, and let's say it's a, you know, $100, that the $100 actually went into the other system. The same thing when you are doing any other, you know, any other procedures, any other entry, you want to verify that, you know, whatever you've put in matches, you know, and usually the totals are the easiest way to kind of check that. And I, I believe that somebody just, you know, that there was just not a sudden review, and that is really our recommendation, that, you know, kind of the doer, and the doer cannot be the reviewer, because if you review your own work, you don't see the forest for the trees, so to speak.
It would have been a mess if the state hadn't caught it.
Well, they, I think, yes.
And they would all be back on the county and the taxpayers.
Sure.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
No, I don't.
So, thank you for your work. You, you've been doing this kind of stuff a long time for a lot of organizations, and you're really good at it. Are there things that, how many years have PMCH been doing it for the county, roughly?
A long time.
Okay. Are there any processes or anything that you guys would like to see done differently, whether it's the one-on-one you're having with the fair board, or our county clerk, or, I mean, are there any processes that we could make run more smoothly for you to do your work?
I think that it seems to be running pretty well now. I mean, Mr. Martinez has, when he started working for the Commission, then he is reviewing all the accruals, providing, you know, that information, you know, allows us to be independent. We know, like I mentioned earlier, you know, you can't, the county keeps their books on cash basis, so if you, and the financials have to be on gap, so we can't, we can't calculate the accruals, we can't prepare all the schedules. And there is really quite a bit of work, like I just mentioned, the calculations for the implementation of the, of the leases. So we do, that I think is a really good addition, you know, that the county has, you know, CPA and staff, Mr. Martinez used to actually work for her from years ago, so he is very familiar with governmental auditing, you know, and clearly there are, we have had issues with some of the components... and clearly there are, we have had issues with some of the component units in the past, and we have had management comment letter that we said, well, you really, you know, you, you, if you had to have an audit on your own, and some of the component units would have to, if they were not component units of the county, they probably would have to hire someone to help them, so, but that has been a lot better in a number of, in quite a few years. They provide accruals, you know, and we have had a lot less issues with that, right?
But I think it's gone very smoothly over the past several years with the component units, and definitely when, before Mr. Martinez, it was a struggle, that some of the, even for the county stuff, but once he came on board, it's gone a lot smoother, because he knows what we're looking for, and.
You don't have to say it, he's right.
I know, we know, we know, we know he's there, no, no, we know he's there.
But no, yeah, we've told him, it, it was a big help to us when he came on board for the county.
One of the reasons, I think, is that the county uses, it has to do with some of the, the accounting software that's used too, that I think is a little harder, so that's why I think that required his, a little bit of an assistant in reconciling the fund balances. The county uses, I mean, doesn't really use a fund accounting software. So down the road, I think that would be our recommendation, that, and I think that has been, and I think Tracy, no, you don't want to change. Well, I think down the road, potentially with the property taxes, I think that will, I think that the county uses also a, you know, a system that's been written by former treasurer years ago, so, and I think that ultimately might have to be updated as well. So maybe at that time, I don't know, but that definitely potentially would be easier, to run certain reports and do certain, have certain, you know, functionality of the system. But it takes time, funds, and, you know, and I think sometimes what works well, you don't want to always change, right? So that's another issue.
So if I understood you right, you're, you're talking about implementing a countywide new software system for every department? Like, that, that would be used by the clerk and the treasurer and the component units?
Right, well, I'm not saying that, I'm not necessarily recommending. I mean, I'm just saying is that's one of the things the county has in older software, and that was an issue for us in the past, because fund accounting, if you look at the financial statements, you have each, each fund, so like the general fund is one company, let's say you have, you know, what are the funds? The custodial funds, you know, construction, like the capital projects fund, it's in a different kind of, a different company, and they, sort of, it's all in one system. County just uses departments, I think, so it's a little bit, you know, and that has been a little bit difficult, more difficult in the past, unless someone who really understands accounting can kind of navigate through that, so.
If I can jump in, what I was under mentioning is if you were to upgrade to a new system, there may be some linkage, like between the clerk and the treasurer. I get fortunate enough to do a lot of counties, and that is a huge challenge of the county with the desegregation, all the different departments between component units, you know, assessor's office, sheriff's office, clerk's office, treasurer's office, trying to compile all that financial information. But she's kind of mentioning that, you know, if your software was to get outdated, that there is other software programs out there that kind of help unify that.
Potentially help a little bit more.
And that would be a futuristic.
Well, software is outdated the minute you upload it, or start using it. But, but, you know, I don't mind for, for the county to be more efficient. Maybe it saves some audit fees, maybe it saves some efficiency in our clerk's office, or in our treasurer's office. I don't mind having the conversation about it, but, you know, that's kind of a, we almost need a task force or something to, to analyze implementation, and, and you and your firm could tell us what, how it works or doesn't work in different counties, so we could make an informed decision at some point. But I think that's a number of years, years down, down the road.
And, and he sure does, he has a.
Raises an interesting point, though, is our software outdated? And our methodology here in this county outdated, and should we?
I wouldn't necessarily say that. It, it, it functions well.
That wasn't what I asked.
I mean, it is, I mean, the software, I wouldn't say is, it is kept up to date by the IT department. I mean, they do keep it up to date with all the updates for the software, but it was not, it's not necessarily designed for.
Fund accounting.
Fund accounting, because it doesn't have the ability to break it out into the separate pieces.
And would that be, would that be a?
And they make a fund accounting software, the, the manufacturer of your current software makes a fund accounting software. And I know it has been discussed in the past, and it's always been just shut down.
Table.
But.
What would be the reason we'd shut that down? Why wouldn't we do it?
It's a huge impedimentation.
And, and I don't know the cost, I've never looked, obviously looked into the cost, but I know previous commissions, I, I know have, it's at least been discussed, not with us, but just internally that, and it's always been kind of just, so as far as the reasonings for not going to, that, I, I, we don't, we don't know that. We just know that we bring it up and say they do have this, if you choose to.
Is it something you'd recommend we do, or at least look into?
Yeah, I would, I mean, it would, it would probably, it would definitely mean probably less work for Nick at the end of when it comes to audit time, that if it all kind of flowed into its own funds, where right now he has to go in and separate everything into the proper place, so that it, but as far as the work initially to implement that.
It's a big undertaking.
Big undertaking to, especially with the county this size to, to implement a new software program is.
And I, I think what my, my fellow commissioner is wanting to avoid, which is also what I want to avoid, is a crisis situation where obsolescence becomes unsupported, which becomes everybody in this county and your firm helping us through a scramble to integrate and implement, so.
I don't think that's an issue.
I don't think it's obsolete, it's just, there may be something better out there that would make, may suit your needs better than what you currently have.
Do you do work for other counties?
Yes.
Are there, are there counties that are, have more advanced systems than we do?
I'm not sure that advance, I was, we were just kind of discussing the.
Or newer?
For fund accounting, that's really all, that it's a little different, you know, but the system works, there is really no obsolescence, I think, issue that we are aware of. And usually when that, that happens, and there are issues, then the software company advises everybody. I, I think that company has no issues as far as having an obsolescence at the moment, at all.
I just want to keep out of the dark ages before we get there.
Yeah, I don't think that's an issue, so.
So I'd like to, to say I appreciate audit this year. It's, it's quality product, just like it has been every year in the past.
Thank you.
And the depth that you guys go to throughout the different elected offices, and throughout the county and whatnot, it, it really does help us quite a bit. And having an audit done every year does catch those where similar process was caught in violation one year, and then, but a different office, department, it was caught again, is the same basic thing. But that's why we do this every year, is because it may not be each office, it may not be the software, but it's the process, and that's what, what you're looking at, is the process of where those, those inconsistencies are created. And so I really do appreciate everything that you've done, and, and Nick, thanks for all your help, well, I suppose Tracy.
I will say, Dave, I, I knew, I knew all the guys at PMCH, every single one of them, for years.
Mr. Chairman?
And I will say, as far as them discussing this with the assessor and whatnot, anytime they've ever brought any issues to me, and I've pushed back, or we've, we've always been able to have an open and honest conversation about certain things, and I appreciate that, having that relationship with these folks, so I think it'll be well received by the assessor.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Michael, did you, you only need like ten minutes or so?
Yeah, Charmaine, I just met with her, and she put the legal issues on it, so it's different than that.
Okay. Tyler, do you have other people coming today?
Renee and Tiffany, I think, are going to be here, so.
Okay, so what I'm thinking is maybe we can, if, Michael, if you are ready, and you only need like ten minutes to talk about this, and we are ahead of time right now, so maybe we can fit you in real quick, and then.
Sure.
Get you back to work.
Like I said, Charmaine's actually upstairs revising this MOU with all the legalese, governmental immunity, liability and all that. The intent of this proposed MOU is, back in October, it was agreed that the parks department would do the grooming for the biathlon, biathlon nationals event at the end of March. So, under the regular grooming agreement that was put in place to pay the biathlon club for grooming over there, it stated in there that a separate agreement needed to be done for grooming nationals. I kind of overlooked that, Rob Rosser reminded me yesterday, so I thought I better get on it. So it was agreed that we'll do it, do the grooming in-kind services approximately. My estimate back in September was, without charging for the groomer itself, the piece of equipment, is being anywhere from fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. So that's kind of the rough ballpark of what it'll cost to, to groom for this event. What I specified in here is that the course maps were provided by the biathlon club, so that's what dictates our grooming. I put in here at first that we would, any changes to these courses, you'd have to give us notice. Speaking with Charmaine, we're going to take that out, these, these are part of the agreement, so this is the course. And then, I put in here that the biathlon club will provide official grooming standards. There's, it's not FIS standards for, for racing, that's for Nordic skiing. Biathlon is some kind of USBA, but it's density of snowpack width, the way the bank, the corners are banked on the downhill slopes, there's a whole science to it, and for an event like this, they'll have a, what we call a TD, a technical director, that'll say if the course is met the specs or not. So we need to have those specifications for my staff to start preparing the site to meet those standards. So that's, that was a requirement by March first that I put in here. I also put that the park staff will start preparation grooming, you know, earlier than in March 12th, which is ten days before the event. You have to groom this several times, bring snow in from the edges, groom over and over, offset your tracks to get certain compaction levels. I don't believe the site is anywhere close to being that at this time, from some of the comments I've had from the public in the recent past. So we'll start doing that probably once a day, twice a day, grooming over there. And then, when the event starts, we'll be grooming early morning in preparation for the event. So we'll, we'll need to know which course is going to be for that day, so that we can specify to that. And then, we, the Toronto County Parks will only groom the racecourses. We're not going to do any additional grooming outside of that on what would be, I guess, the recreational trails. That would be left up to the biathlon club to do. And so that's, that's the gist of it, but Charmaine has a completely different layout of this, so.
I'd give you a copy of it if you wanted to.
I'm just going off the top of my head, so I think I'm pretty close. Yeah, yep, this is it. And, and basically in here, it also says, to the extent feasible, that park staff will attempt to groom consistent with the grooming standards. There's a couple, I do see a couple of minor changes. For example, I just read section four D three. We added in front of grooming on that official grooming standards, which is referenced in four A. Just to be clear, that, that grooming standards provided by the biathlon club are the official standards, are not what the head of, head of the event decides are the grooming standards. So that we're very consistent. My staff's very competent to do this, they, they understand these specifications and how to get there, so. Any questions?
Michael, going past the, the contract, are they, how's it looking for them getting this national event going?
So I haven't heard too much. I did hear, I got an email recently from Luke at Visit Casper. They had obtained buses, shuttle buses for the event from the airport. I did send a response asking if those vehicles had chains. I did not hear an answer yet. So that's one of my major concerns is, I, I kind of, my original understanding was they were going to approach the school district, which they're, you know, they have trained drivers for those conditions. They drive up to the biathlon regular, and their buses are equipped for that road. But, you know, last Sunday, I think it was Sunday, that road was drifted, people were stuck, and because of the warm temperatures, it had sheeted to ice coming downhill. So I do believe that the shuttle buses need to be appropriately equipped for that type of weather event.
And it looks like he's going to have adequate parking and staged.
Yeah, at Bear Trap.
Rest areas.
That was one of their questions to me, was how are we going to stage it at Bear Trap? And I said, well, I don't know if we can separate it between the snow machiners and the attendees of the, of the nationals, but we can mark off an area where you get picked up and dropped off by the shuttle. So, and we can definitely get that all painted out in time for the event and everything.
And you've talked to him about other logistics, such as the restroom facilities and?
Honestly, not since last fall.
Okay.
I assume they're getting them, I, I talked to him about his outhouse, his current outhouse up there, and making sure the doors were clear of snow, so that it doesn't freeze thaw underneath them and, and pop the hinges, because that can happen, we have it happen at Bear Trap. And snow machiners leave, leave our outhouse doors open, and, and it's not clear, they'll, they'll wedge snow in there to keep it open for sunlight.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Michael, I thought you were having a periodic, if not weekly, then every other week, meeting or phone conference with Rob and interested parties?
Uh, no.
Oh.
They, I haven't approached that for that, they.
I thought you were doing that last fall.
So we had a couple of meetings, but that was about it. He, he provided some maps of where he wanted to put his tents. I reviewed them with my staff, told them what we thought would be best for grooming. He prefers it a different way, so I think I know where he's putting his tents, I think I know where he's putting his outhouses. And then, you know, the road and bridge has been keeping the parking lot as clear as possible, but as you all know, the snow is deep, so there's only so many places you can push it, but.
I think my point, Michael, is that it would behoove you, and I think the county, and certainly Mr. Rosser, to have maybe a weekly phone call. to have maybe a weekly phone call from here on out moving forward with the interested parties. And I, I would assume that would be Mike Agler, yourself, maybe someone from Visit Casper, I, I don't know. But, a lot of things are gonna slip through the cracks, I think, just knowing, well, having the history that, that I think we, we have. So, I'd certainly encourage you to do that. It looks like, Mr. Chairman, we have?
Sure.
Good afternoon, Tyler Doherty with Visit Casper, and just wanted to support Michael. So, familiar with this, and we are aware, we've reached out to Rob via email a couple of times. We actually have a meeting set for this Thursday that I had to call him on his cellphone to set up. We brought in a rep from USA Biathlon in December. We thought it was important that he met with him, so they knew, I guess, the importance of what was expected. The logistics is a big concern from our end, too. So, we paid for him to come in, they met, they know each other, they're aware of each other. I think USA Biathlon is meeting now to determine some of the logistics that they would like to see. To the point about the buses, we ran into a big problem with available drivers through the school district, so it brought to our attention that Glen out at the airport had buses. We can use those, we're waiting to hear back then on the chains for the tires to get them up there. It is our understanding that we'll do a loop from Bear Trap for competitors when they're up there, take them to the site and then loop back, but it would be the responsibility of the competitors to, to get up there. And then, we've worked with Rob to get a better idea of where they're at from a volunteer standpoint, how they're pushing that out there, how we can help push that out there, and we will supply marketing and then food for those volunteers. We have a meeting then set up with USA Biathlon next week to get where they're at, from a number standpoint, what else they would like to see, because from an optics standpoint, it's important for us in our organization.
Battery's dying.
Important for us in our organization that this goes off without a hitch, because we don't want to them consider us for future events and this be the case in the long. So, yes, we're aware, we're trying to stay on top of it. Communication with Rob, I think, has been an issue with, we're trying to.
Sure, yep. Well, thanks for your efforts in working with him and working with the project. I think that we're all committed, so we need to do everything we can to make it come off as well as possible.
I'd like to see you bringing in the USA Biathlon.
It wasn't completely that way initially.
Did you say Charmaine? I'm sorry.
Bringing them in.
Oh, in December, yeah.
Yeah.
I think that was important for everybody, so we knew the expectation, especially. Especially for Rob, and we took our rep. There we go. And we took our rep up to the site so he could get some eyes on it. We spoke with him about the logistics of our loop and what we had in mind. But, some of this needs to fall on Rob, and that's what our conversation will be on Thursday, is how do you plan to send this out? When do you plan to set it out to competitors? And we wanna know where they're at from a volunteer standpoint, too, and what the expectation is there. We asked for that probably well over a month ago. What are you looking for, timeframes, days of the week, so then we can push it out via our channels? I haven't heard, to my knowledge, anything back on that. I feel much better about the busing situation than I did a, a month ago because of the driver shortage with the school district, but we still need Rob to do some logistics for us as well.
Michael, the only other thing I would add is, if there is language missing out of this, will you get with Charmaine and make sure that that is in this contract prior to?
Yeah, I actually, right before I showed up here, that's where I was, and we, we squared away. So, there's just a couple of minor word edits in here, single words, that's all that is changed on, on, from the one that you have here.
Okay, well, I literally just got these before you walked in, so I just wanna make sure that whatever you needed added in there did get added in.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, to be noted, Casper Mountain Biathlon Club has not seen this yet.
Okay.
So, they may have something that they wanna change, but I feel like this is a fair, fair deal. We're putting out quite a bit of fundage and effort to, to be able to do the grooming for them, so we're not asking for a lot, we're just asking that we're able to control the grooming during this event for the courses. Is basically the gist of this agreement.
Okay.
The only material change I noticed in there that would affect them is what Charmaine was saying about how they should, what standards we should groom by, and how, how she works with changes, and I don't know why they always follow that.
Follow the standard for grooming?
It's a change in the contract, too, which is, I assume this is the national order.
No, this is between the, the Casper Mountain Biathlon Club who operates the Biathlon area. For us, they have an operating agreement, five-year operating agreement.
Grooming standards provided by CNBC.
Right, and those will be, those will come from US Biathlon Association, yeah.
And that's, that, that's the only real issue for them.
Well, that, and.
It's good for us, actually.
Yeah, not, not to groom on the courses while we're preparing them. There's several reasons to keep it isolated to our Parks Department doing the grooming. That way, we know what the standard is, that way, we know there's no changes happening from day to day as we're trying to prepare this, this course to meet their standards.
And you'll find out that they agree with this here shortly.
Yes, as soon as I get the nod from the commission that this is okay, I'll get it sent to the Casper Mountain Biathlon Club and try and get them to sign it and get it back.
Considering the fact that all we're doing is looking at an addition to what we currently have with them, and this is just specifically for this event.
Correct.
I think this is fine, I mean, 'cause it does lay out what you're gonna do, what you expect them to do. And it's pretty simple, you know, but I don't have any problem with it, and I, I think this is what we needed to get done so that they know that this is over and above, and that they, we are gonna take that responsibility for making sure those trails are, are ready when they're, when they're here, and you're taking care of them and not them.
Yeah.
Michael.
Yes.
Your Paragraph 7 says that CNBC will not groom these areas during this time period. Not only grooming, though, you know, just snowshoe traffic and some other things can damage or interfere with your grooming responsibility under this. Is there anything else that you would wanna put in here to basically let Rob know what all or what in addition he's not supposed to be doing? I, I don't know what that list might include.
Yeah, speaking with my main groomer, you know, the snowshoeing and fat biking tracks really aren't super impactful 'cause they continue to groom over and over. The Biathlon Club, Biathlon area has little to zero traffic a lot of days. I've been up there several afternoons, and there's zero to two vehicles in the area, so I think we're okay. Our groomers usually eat that up pretty well, the snow, snowshoe tracks and whatnot, so I don't think. I mean, the day of event, that would be impactful, but the course halls be closed to the public on those days, so. But, I could include something like that. You know, he, he has a snow machine groomer, but basically, it's just any grooming on, on the course is what, what we're trying to avoid.
And grooming includes harvesting, right, moving the snow?
Yes, yeah, it would probably include some of the snow harvesting. You know, hopefully, the snow stays with us till the end of March, because that was one of the concerns early on, was, is there gonna be enough snow to hold this event over there? That site does keep more snow.
It might give you some flexibility if you added a sentence in here that, depending upon conditions and, and circumstances, they will agree to, you know, work with you in a reasonable fashion to, whether it's notifications or maybe even closures during this, this period. If, if you see some areas that are getting heavily used or trashed or whatever, you could put some flexibility in here that you can, in order to, you know, uphold your obligation to, you know, shut things down or to direct him to do or not do certain things as the conditions arise.
Good.
You can get with me if you want after.
Yeah.
Tonight.
With the additions to what Peter was just talking about and making sure that the verbiage that you have given to Charmaine, 'cause we haven't seen the cleanest version of it, is everybody okay with moving forward on this thing? Okay.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, due to the lateness of these corrections being made and whatnot, would we be able to perhaps put this on the next meeting agenda? And/or sign it and then ratify it the next meeting? Because there's not enough time to edit packets, websites, that type of thing, and it doesn't sound like all the corrections have been made or the updates have been made accordingly.
Yeah, I agree, and I also, if they have not seen it on the other side and there's possibly changes on the other side, then we need to make sure that those are incorporated, so yes, I think the next meeting.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, sir. All right, sorry, Tyler, put you behind a little bit.
Good afternoon again, everyone, my name is Tyler Doherty, I'm with Visit Casper. I would like to recognize two of our board members, Renee Petten Jones and Tiffany Gamble. So, it's very nice to meet all of you, I have been in the position since December 1st. Very excited to be here, I'm enjoying the position. I don't wanna assume anything with this presentation. I'm aware that you probably know who Visit Casper is, given my predecessor and the successes that she has had, but if I need to expand on anything, please let me know, and I will. But, it's also important for me that you know who our staff and our board is. So, if you have the digital version of this, there's a clickable redirect to our website to kinda show you who they are, what they do, and I've tasked them with getting out in the community as well to be representatives of Visit Casper. You'll notice two spots up there or on your slide deck that we are in the process of filling two positions, so Director of Marketing and Communications, and then possibly an Analytics and Social Media Generalist. So, we're down to two candidates for our Director of Marketing and Communications position. Hopefully have that individual on board in March and the other one shortly after. And then, I would like to recognize our board, so there is one change on here, if you are familiar with our board. Jim Rubel is no longer with us, he took a new position at a plant in Wyoming. He was our Board Chair. I believe I jumped the gun here a little bit with Tiffany as Chair, but she was our Vice Chair. But, these are our eight board members as of now, if you need additional information, again, a redirect. But, Jim did a wonderful job, was a great advocate for Visit Casper in this community. He will be missed from, from our organization. So, a breakdown again of who we are, we have a great gig. We get to sell this wonderful community in this county to non-locals, and we can do that by a number of different ways. Sporting events, marketing, PR releases, we get to be creative with how we do that, there is a plan behind it. But, this description is on our website for any guests who don't know, or locals that don't know what we do. It's very important to me that we are educate and advocate for our organization on a local level, so I will bring this up to any presentation when I talk to other groups, that this is what we do, who we are, and why we do it. That's very important to me. Some of the other things that we do, so, why am we in high school bids? So, we work Proud to Host the Best, Renee is a great champion and advocate for that. We host quite a few, wrestling, basketball's coming up here. We had to reschedule Cheer because of the weather here most recently. But, we host quite a few high school championships in, in Casper. We have a big part of that and why they're here, when they're here, the experience that they have in working with the organizations, and also facilities on a local level to make sure they have a good experience. We do marketing campaigns, we have Proud to Host the Best, Fifty One Fifty and, and that brand through Visit Casper, we also do. CTA program is under us, the Biz Challenge, so quite a few different avenues that we try to branch out and partner with. We wanna be involved, we wanna have a voice at the table. And so, a few of those here, one of them on the left, if you're looking at your deck, is Film Casper. So, the film incentive was a big one for us, and unfortunately, it got shot down here, most recently, as last night, I believe. But, Kelly Estes is our film liaison here at the local level, he works with any groups who come in, and they might, may wanna do a shoot somewhere in the area. So, he will find those locations, he'll be the, the middle person to maybe find hotels, find equipment, find available land to go out and shoot those. He has been very active here recently with some that will start to roll out. I don't wanna announce those yet, but I'm sure he'll be excited when that does get released. But, he has been a great advocate for us from the film level, from the film side of things on, on local level. And then, the one on the right just kinda lists out some of the tournaments and championships that we've had here recently, so a pretty extensive list. We continue to try and grow this list. The airport helps us, our facility helps us, our geographical location helps us, but it's a competitive market. Sometimes, it's a pay-to-play market, so we need to make sure that we're battling and comparing the ROI versus what we're actually investing. But, we wanna be a hub, especially for the sports market in this region, and hopefully, we're gonna continue to see that moving forward. The CTA program I mentioned, so that was started, I believe, in 2017 in conjunction with the Eclipse. The leadership thought it'd be a great idea to educate local constituents who wanted to volunteer for that big project. That has since grown into over a thousand individuals who have gone through this program. They're an extension of us, they talk about, and our customer service oriented with Visit Casper, they can talk about the region. We train anybody from hoteliers to those in the school system, health profession, even police officers. So, we try to really branch out when it comes to the CTA program. The one on the right then, Fifty One Fifty Restaurant Week, this is just wrapping up. Had another good year, I believe it was our fifth year, but another small event, or another event that we work with locally to get some, get some exposure for Casper. And then, I talked about, a little bit about the Biz Challenge. This is with Impact 307. We will work with them again at the end of May and June to see if there's any businesses from a tourism side that may have an impact in the Casper area, so really starting to build that out now. Should ramp up with some of the verbiage that'll be released here in the next couple of months. So, just by the numbers, in my mind, tourism is impactful, and these are 2021 numbers, we're still trying to gather the 2022 numbers. But, just the direct spend, the visitors to our area, the cost savings to our local constituents, almost over five hundred dollars. So, tourism is impactful. This is something also, too, that we wanna continue to promote and advocate for. I think there's a misconception on how we're funded, what we spend our money for, how it plays a role. That's something we wanna do a better job of, or at least myself at Visit Casper, but just some quick numbers to see, for you to see how impactful tourism is within the area. And again, this was a clickable link, but I just wanted to bring up the master plan that we, is a living document as of 2021. And I do wanna highlight a few of the strategic issues that we had, and then also the strategies within that. So, you can see up on here, Casper Mountain is one of them. And so, I do wanna touch on specifically the K-Lin Plan and then the Way Finding Signage MOU. Michael is no longer here, but Michael and I spoke a couple of weeks ago, so the K-Lin Plan, Visit Casper contributed funds to that plan, which is the Master Trails Plan, late 2021. To my knowledge, and talking with Michael, he's waiting for the final document so that they can implement, and it'd be a living document on where trails would be, what they would post for signage, how we can then market that. That was a contribution from Visit Casper, and I believe a partnership from the county. And then, the other big one was the Way Finding Signage with the county. Again, we contributed in late 2021 to north of a hundred thousand for wayfinding signs. To my knowledge, again, with Michael, he is waiting for those to get created and then figure out a time for install. I bring these two projects up specifically for the Destination Development Grant Program through the Wyoming Office of Tourism. So, we have been fortunate enough, and about a week after I started, came into an allocation of funds that we could use to promote the city and the county on a national, regional, state level. We have funds that we have parameters as far as guardrails and what we can spend it on. One of them that they mentioned in there is wayfinding signs. So, a study was done locally, I believe, in 2018. The final product was delivered in 2019 for a wayfinding project by a company from Iowa. That project, to my knowledge, was north of one million dollars. We are gonna commit funds from this program for wayfinding signage within Casper. I bring that up because we're gonna be specific regarding Casper Mountain signage within Casper, so we can direct people to Casper Mountain. When that project is done, then we can utilize those signs as well. It's our intent right now that we're gonna drop a pin at David Street Station and let it bleed out with the funds that we have committed, and then those signs would be installed first. But, also have in mind then that any Casper Mountain signage would be priority so we can get people up to Casper Mountain, so they can explore and navigate it safely and correctly. Some other projects that we're working on, the Ford Wyoming Center. Some other projects that we're working on, uh, the Ford Wyoming Center to update their locker rooms. Feel like that's an important play for us because we host so many high school state championships. But we've also been told from regional and national bids that our locker rooms are not up to snuff. So we are going to invest in new carpet, a new shower arrangement, new locker rooms that we can now be competitive with bids. We have one bid that is going to be, um, announcing in April. They have specifically told us that if you update your locker rooms, you will be one of the final two. And given where we're up against with the other community, I feel confident that we can get that bid. Never a guarantee, but the locker room, um, updates will go a long way wi- within that. So we have some other projects that I've highlighted up here. Uh, we are getting a bus partnership with the City of Casper at the end of March. We will wrap that bus. Funds, uh, from this will help, um, facilitate that. We also want to do some, uh, additional, um, advocacy and education commercials, um, videos with local dignitaries to promote what we have to offer here and, uh, promote on our website. So again, this was, uh, on my front door about a week or two within the position, which was a great, uh, great thing to have. I'm very excited about it. Um, and we, we, just to clarify, we have 18 months to spend these funds. Um, so there is a, a clock that's ticking, but we want to be strategic and make sure it fits what we're trying to do from a master plan standpoint as well. Uh, they do need to be approved by the Wyoming Office of Tourism before we actually spend the funds. So, and I would like to open it up for any questions. Uh, be respectful of your time and I'll expand on anything that you'd like to do.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Jim.
Yeah, so for the way, wayfinding signs, that project kind of stalled out with the city. But the county is moving forward as much as we could. As it develops, like you were talking, the, the signage, the design and all that, that we're not reinventing the wheel. We're going back to that, right?
To my knowledge, Michael had everything confirmed and it was more I thought just from, uh, getting them to now print it off and then they install.
Right. I'm, I'm talking about like you're saying drop a pin with, in David Street. The signage in Casper is going to reflect what's, because it is all going to be standardized, look the same, have the same design and, and just kind of have that holistic feel to it.
Correct. When I mentioned the pin drop, that was more of a strategy from our standpoint of the, the dollars that we committed to the city. We wanted to make sure that when it bleeds out those funds, that that's our priority, but also keeping in mind that we want guests to be able to get to Casper Mountain. So if somebody's coming down one of the highways, they know that, okay, take a left for Casper Mountain. The Casper Mountain signage is separate and that'll be, be there to my knowledge if it's printed and installed.
So you got the city back onboard with doing this?
Correct.
Okay. And somebody told a story on you. What's this about the cold keeping you from coming to Casper?
I don't think that's accurate at all, no.
Cheyenne.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Well, so, yeah, negative 22. I think we wanted to play it safe. That's not even the best story that I have and, um, I can tell you separately from my welcoming to Casper when I first arrived, which, uh, I can share with you after as well, so.
Welcome to Casper, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lard.
There's a hole in all of this and I'm hoping that you seem like the guy to start addressing it. But I'm going to mention it to everybody who comes in here. I think Casper needs a first-class convention center. Thank you very much.
I will do my legwork to make that happen. Try and make that happen. And full disclosure, yeah, that's something, a market that we are missing out on. Um, the Ford Wyoming is great to an extent, but it only has so much floor space. So we are, we are handicapped from what we can bid on and what we can attract to Casper.
We need one.
I appreciate your support. We'll get working.
Uh, Commissioner North, maybe you can answer on this, but as far as, we've had discussions about Casper Mountain Road and there's some work that'll be going on with that. So I think that that may hold up the wayfinding signs being put in place until we get that taken care of, but that project just.
Yeah, I can't. Basically, we're going to be repaving that, the state highway going across Casper Mountain. So until we get that done, it's silly to put signs up, turn around, take them out and then have to reset them. So, um, if I remember right, there's only six, is that right, Michael? Michael came back in. Six signs that we'd be able to put up between now and then. Yeah, so that's where the majority of them are going to be. And so it's gonna, until we get that done, it doesn't make a lot of sense to duplicate effort, spend money and then ta- putting them in and then taking them out. Uh, especially with as much construction work as there's going to be.
Right.
Um, so as far as putting those in, that's going to be kind of a, it won't be this year, but next year when they actually go in there and redo that road. So, um, that's something that, you know, just, just so we don't tear up stuff that we put in.
Understood.
It makes a lot more sense to, it's like putting in the street and then going and replacing the water lines. It doesn't make a lot of sense. So, uh, that's one thing that I know that we've been working on and trying to get everything lined up to get that taken care of, because that's a $9 million project, getting that across. And that's gonna, that's gonna increase the access and make that road a lot safer once we get it all finished. So.
Understood. Thank you.
So.
Anybody else? All right. Welcome.
All right. Thank you. Pleasure to meet all of you.
Nice to meet you. Good seeing you.
Yeah, you as well.
Nice to see you, Renee. Tiffany, nice to see you. Tell your grandmother I said hello. Hey, Peter.
Yeah.
Has there been a problem with this, the one problem I did hear with this biathlon thing? Some people say that they, they screwed up some of the ski rides. Is that true?
We're talking about Michael's grooming on the. There, there's sometimes a little friction between who's supposed to be on which side of the ridge and. Do you know Rob Bassner? He came to a meeting last fall and when we were doing this memorandum, this, this was on just the general way. And he's, he can be tough to work with. You know, I think he means well, but I think what he wants to do is kind of go down his path, what he wants to do, what he's always been doing. We're all like that. But when Michael is saying, hey, let's be clear on what the county is supposed to do and it doesn't, we're smart.
One, two, three. Vibrate. The echo.
Echo.
Echo. Echo.
Here's that contract. Um, I told, I, you know, there's going to be more.
So how long's our break?
We'll work on that for you, Dad.
There's even more changes coming to this MOU. Yeah, so.
Well, she was supposed to be adding a couple of things in there, but then that needs, before we do anything, just go back.
Yeah. Yeah. All that for nothing. Okay. There was, I put a flash drive on your desk, Peter.
Roll good.
Hi, from legal.
Yep.
I'm going to go down.
Thank you.
Because they need some budget.
I don't want to keep that.
Is that, is that something that's going to read the number?
No, quarterly review, um, tracking, whether they're, um, you know, they're, they're within the planner, they're looking at all the money. The split line is a little less restricted, but the R book I mean, a little more.
Does, does he have the, you know, the, the, to manage that? But, but that's half, that's half of the.
We just talked about it today.
That's half of the analysis. The other half is either kind of, like, yeah.
Hi, personally, I think you have the all the insurance. You have the grant. Straight to our position, but.
Hey, grab those.
Where are we doing it?
Um, the curved edge goes.
Oh, you want to act like it was?
Please, thank you.
Do they have to be close or just?
Yeah.
You want me to go through comments here? You want me to, if you don't mind?
No, no, that's great.
Can we start early in the exec?
Yeah. Here in a minute, we want to take care of one more thing.
Okay.
I had some of the British and some penis.
Put Nick on the, our business. Heard the audit recording and all that, uh, all the tracing, those that he should be compensating because it's about a young. His job duty now, so we thought we'd ask him for thoughts on that. Yeah, there she is. She's going to see Nick Anton or here, she's going to stop. She's going to see Nick and talk to her over here, so I'm talking about it real quick. Because Eric told me yesterday, whoever is in charge of the urban funding on the other side, told me they didn't work here. So they're like, you need to get a new person there.
Is that, do you guys think that's a possibility? We don't give them that by 3:00.
I haven't been to that in about four weeks. There's no way. Again, we'll just go to one every week.
This is where all the work happens.
Four of us, three people.
The only thing I really need to do, you want to be the truth now?
Yeah, I would give you the truth.
My little dog scoots up around the box and I don't want him to sit on the corner. Now I think he might be good, you know, my wife is a good one, but I brought him to all of the city council meetings and nobody even knew he was there.
I know there's a solution.
My, my wife takes our, our dog home. My, my dog.
He's smiling the wrong way, dude. I don't think.
I've solved it in one night.
Yeah.
Yeah, my dog wants to be with me and, uh.
My, my whip it now. I should see the size of it. I bet my whip it can outrun the dog.
I, I bet, I bet so. I bet my, uh.
We didn't be a race, I don't think.
You know, my lab would just sit there and say, give me some more food. Yeah.
No, that's one. Uh, of course, we are, uh, talking in, uh, in, uh, about, and they're on, they're, they're, uh, but we brought up the, uh, it's not really a strategy, it's maybe, I should probably say.
We're waiting on Trump.
I have no idea what we're.
Make it?
I think he'll trace, trace it, said it's.
Really?
I just thought that they're gonna come up here.
So is, do we start at three forty? When do we start, Steve? When do we start again? When do we restart?
Well, three thirty is when we're supposed to start, so you have twenty-two minutes.
Well, it says three forty for Charmaine Reed.
Well, but we already moved Michael up, so we can go back to three thirty for Charmaine.
But there's no reason, he's still wandering around the angles.
Me? I wanna be here for two thirty.
For what? Well, I moved you from three thirty to let you do your talking. You got more to say?
No, I'm good.
Oh.
Well, I, I could do a whole lot of stuff there. Actually, some others myself.
Are you gonna put how to get to the churches on the signage?
Hey, so.
How do you get who?
The church properties up on the mountain.
So, when we were designing, uh, we're having three of seventeen. They got that. The seventeen they decided, you know, private property.
So. What we're talking about, said they were like one, they're at one thirty-five, so we talked about, thoughtful, massive response, move them to do that deal up there. And still there's like sixty thousand dollars to be, uh, sure, like, sixty thousand. And the only reason I, I like that idea, do a magic.
Well, sixty, they're only leaving, about seventy short of.
I thought they did.
They needed a hundred and eighty.
One sixty-one.
One thirty-six.
One, yeah.
One thirty-six.
Oh.
So why don't we do that?
One, is that ongoing?
They needed to, that's an annual thing, and so they wanted us to handle it, so they have a company, we, we asked for it, and they're major years, especially with the seven, because they're stewardship. That they, they're looking at, stuff, they're more, that, they try to use, take work, they're major years where we can't use stuff.
As long as I hope you would, I send my money this into that twenty. And what we're looking at with coolness of the city and the health department. So with that, if it was managed properly, it'd probably be there for a lot more than twenty years.
I was just thinking, um, if we get the kids, then we don't have to, you know.
Did you guys look at, um, Nick's, I didn't have a chance to listen. Um, and I have some questions for Nick from that, uh, talk.
There was someone?
Well, yeah, but on, from the audit, I have some questions for, that, that really weren't for the auditor, because it was for the, the treasurer. So I'd like to, like, and I can get together with Nick offline, and some of them, right, I'll ask quick, easy answers, for stupid questions, but, um. You know, uh, when I was looking at the financials that we got, it was a, to figure yesterday, yesterday, um, they go through, by the end of the calendar year. And there's some things that stand out pretty significantly, but I think in general, um, being halfway through the fiscal year, if I'm reading it right, if the year to date, it's not a fiscal year, not a calendar year. So I assume that to be the true case, um, we're doing well.
We're doing the same as well.
And, I mean, and, and part of it will be balanced, you know, there'll probably be some little imbalance, and, but I think not completely across the board, but, you know, a lot of the categories were way up. On, on revenue.
But is some of this other spending been taken into consideration as far as like raises or whatever?
Not yet.
That's my only concern, and that's what I was saying, the other day, is that, you know, we, we want from that.
So, yeah, now we got, I wanted to, now we got, we're gonna try to, three.
Right, exactly.
I don't like, yeah.
So.
Well, and then the, the water line, I mean, I mean, there are just a lot of things, um, that I, I don't mind at all.
Sure.
Doing this for a big crisis, and I, I love it, and taking sixty grand away, or is it like that, you know, from that for a lot of years, uh, you know, and coming up with seventy from something great. But it's, it's like, it's just one more thing, where it's like, and we don't have, um, the lodge, uh, lodge final numbers yet, you know, that that's.
No, they're working on those, I should have those between the next meeting, kind of, have a lot of interviews.
So, you know, it's just, it's not gonna be less.
No.
Thank you.
But at the end of the day, at two thirty, at one thirty, I mean, if they got, I mean, if you have sixteen feet.
Well, maybe they'll have some feedback from the other generals too.
Yeah.
We'll see about that. Anyway, um, anyway, no, he said the arbor, he'll do the arbor stuff, no problem, so.
I always wanted a setup here. Say motion denied.
Yeah, yeah, oh, uh, she's off.
You've probably heard that a lot.
No, I didn't. I didn't.
Oh, right, because of all the defense and their stupid ass motions on everything.
Who was the second?
Yeah, I heard.
You can, you can beat their ass, because they just do that.
Yeah, well.
My friend Murphy sold same motion five thousand times, I think, you give me a.
Right, Bill.
Charmaine, motion denied. Or motion granted.
Remedy, I should probably be, trying to rock it.
May I hold on a minute, I'll look at it while I got you on the phone. So.
I guess, buy some time. Yeah.
Thank you.
It hasn't come through yet, so. Still, but, that doesn't, yeah, I'm on my phone, so it doesn't mean that it won't, hold on a minute. Okay.
Okay, the overtime, oh, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay.
What do you need to do?
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll keep my eyes open. Okay, which, which one did you send it to, the David Horst two fifty-five? Okay, okay, that's it, that's the one that came through earlier. Yeah. No, I haven't, hold on. No, no, nothing, yes. Yeah, it'll come through, it just, it just takes a little while, but if I don't get it, I will give you a call back, so, I'll keep my eyes open.
So, Dave.
Okay, okay, sounds, sounds good.
Dave.
Thanks, okay, bye-bye.
Did you, did you get why they, why that stuff went up so high on the pensions? The difference in that?
Um, part of it is because there's been substantially more retirees.
They're retiring more?
They're retiring more and they're living longer. And so.
More power to them.
Well, but that's, that's really what it, it comes down to, is that, uh, yeah, it's, it's, uh. Because everybody's, I mean, the, it's like the farmer, they didn't, they didn't, uh, they put in, put enough in the farmer's pension years ago, and so now everybody's having to catch up and pay more in, and that's the way, that's the way it's.
They're, they're talking about a huge difference in numbers from three million to twelve million?
I know, I know. But it doesn't take very many to, for it to, for it to end up being out of whack, so. I don't know what the whole deal is, but that's, that's kinda, that's what it amounts to. I'll set that up with, I talked to Christie, and we'll get that set up after I get back with Judy.
Have you talked to her?
To Christie or Judy?
No.
Yeah, I talked to her last night.
Okay.
Yeah, I, no, I called her.
I didn't want to blaze that.
No, 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 I talked to her last, no, that didn't mean she's not gonna come.
Oh, I know.
But I talked to her last night, and I said, we'll, we'll sit down and we'll go over everything, um.
Was she receptive?
Yeah, she was, she was fine with that, and so, um, and I, I told Christie, I said, this first go around, I said, all we're gonna do is be, be listening, you know, it's not gonna be, we're not gonna give any effort or anything like that, we're gonna just sit down, and I'll have her give it to us in writing at a time, so we can look at it, so we know what, exactly what she's looking at, and that way, it's. Be further ahead that way, so, that's, yeah. On the, what are you finding in the signs, so, um, the colors, it doesn't make any sense to get that stuff and put it in place and turn around and rip it out, but that's, that's just silly to do that, and so. So, did, um. You're talking about, firm, the industry and stuff like that, as a governor, is there anything I can do to help out with any of that stuff?
No, we're working on a personal, on my day job side. I've got people in my office that are already all over, not only, um, yeah, they're looking at shot show stuff, but Washington State is in a best capacity, uh.
Yeah.
State law kicking them all out, during, during manufacturing.
Yeah, you can't do anything, and so.
So we're working.
If we can, yeah, if we can get those guys to come here, um, that'd be really good, on, um. I've been talking to Trent Johnson and Kevin O'Hernery, those guys too, Kevin calls, just to see where we're at and what's going on. Um, Glenn did offer, Glenn Keweska offered up one of his blowers, but it's, he hasn't, but, but his main, has a broken axle, so we'll have to wait until that gets fixed before we can do anything, um. But he's thinking that'll probably be Friday, get out there and start hitting that again, but, um, my kid, or I know, is over budget, very, and, uh, with fuel and everything else. Not only that, he's having to, he's got that dozer rented right now from Cab, he's got a D-seven, it's got flotation tracks on it, and that's, that's made a huge difference as far as him being able to get around and do stuff, um. But. He's, uh. He's looking at trading, the two dogs, he's got. I told him, I said, see if we can get some number fours and put some stuff together, as far as that goes, because if we didn't get that one, that one's got about twenty-five hundred dollars on it right now, but, uh.
It'd be nice to find a used, a little over like there.
Well, the good thing about this one is that all our rental stuff goes toward the Perkland house. So we've got that, you know, that's, that's one thing that's, that would be good, if we could do that, um. But even though it's round, they've got so many bells and whistles on them anymore.
Steve, what did you think about starting the office of a chaplain? I'm not saying who the chaplain should be or anything, I'm just saying.
What are you gonna do?
Well, I can show you the, what they do. It can be, you know, it can be pretty broad, like they do in Congress, which is, uh, probably can't find it right now, but, uh, the, uh. They claim that, let me see if I can sum it up this way, where it's been initiated, and you get the right people doing it, they claim it, uh. People start getting along a hell of a lot better. They start getting along a hell of a lot better. And because the, the spiritual side of things are pointed out, as a point of, as opposed to egotistical, egotistical things happening all the time, there's quite a difference there, really. I, well, he, I mentioned.
No.
Do you want it?
About, about a chaplain.
I'm not gonna say yes or no.
Well, I'm just asking you to consider it, it's, it's something, but if we, I can get you some information where.
I don't know that it necessarily belongs here during meetings, personally.
Well, there's, there's different phases of it. They, they can, they can provide services, let's say some lady's having trouble at home, and she wants a spiritual advisor, she comes with the chaplain, he might find somebody to talk to her. I don't know.
I think they have a chaplain.
Not here, not in the county.
Uh, I bet they do, talk to the sheriff and see, I'll bet they do.
I don't think we do, I don't know.
PD has for years.
Yeah, I know, but that's for.
No, I mean, we, we call them out. Somebody requested.
But I think if we re- recognize a, the office, and then we decide how you may want, who, because there's different people that would like to do it, and it, it's, I hope it isn't too much of a personality con- contest. But after I read what this guy told me one does, I was pretty impressed about all the different. All the different issues that are involved, but it has an underlying thing, Steve, it could be a very good thing for us.
How many last gen do you think?
Four. That's, that's number four, that's the answer? Uh, I don't know. Well, it, it, I, there's a lot of aspects to it, plus you'd have to find an appropriate person.
You get more, there's more than one, though, see, you have different people.
Well, regardless, I mean, even across, it'd have to be like a, a permanent position, like four.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know, I. I don't see it. Personally, I'm good with it, but for Sheriff Wise, I'm hesitant, if that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, it does.
You ready?
Just making sure. Let's wash some clothes. Well, they, 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 I thought they were so far up before, what they wanted to do was, was just.
I got that voucher yesterday from, uh, CNFR team for a building issue.
The stupid thing.
Everybody, I didn't want to come to the table and play either, though. They were fighting multiple times. That'll be interesting.
Kind of a big problem.
Are we ready?
So, so, were you guys waiting on me?
I think we were.
Um.
Waiting for three thirty.
Yeah, and three thirty is arrived soon.
All right, I was waiting for some official, go. Um, and also, with regards to the legal update and the agenda review, I'll start with the agenda review, what do you guys want in that, I mean, I, I looked at this agenda and, and there's not much to say about it.
So, the agenda review obviously is set up so that we can look at, uh, future, future dates to see what's in there, if anybody needs anything added on to certain dates, they can. If you have fu- future agenda items, then those agenda, those items can be put on there, so they can be put onto a, a future work date, um, so. But if anybody has any questions for like on the February twenty-first coming up, and I actually do, um, on that, the liquor license renewals, um, do we get a report or anything from the sheriff or on the, the establishments themselves, calls for service to those establishments? Um, you know, how many, how many times the sheriff's been called to the locations, and just in overall, you know, are they all in conformance with what's going on, or do we have a problem bar that we're spending a lot of time at? Um, and, and the reason I ask that is if we had a place that just gets frequently visited by law enforcement, then that's probably somebody we want to bring in and talk to and ask what they can do to assist us in assisting them to cut the calls down.
So, Mr. Chairman, typically, um, I send out my notice of renewals to the health department, the fire, county fire, and the sheriff's office, and if there's any concerns at that time, they'll relay them to me. Um, so then, um, once the renewals come up at the meeting, you know, I just give a brief report, and so, no, I guess a quick answer to that is no, however, if there were infractions, and when, if and when they do happen, he would, you know, more than likely bring that up, um, at least to me, and then I could relay it on to the commissioners, but if you do want a report, I'm sure the sheriff would be happy to do that.
So, I guess follow-up question to that, then, how many liquor licenses do we have out in the county?
Seventeen, eighteen, something like that.
Okay, so, would, I, I don't think it would take that long, I mean, and Jim would know this too, getting into CAD, it's just simply pulling by address anyways, call for service in a certain amount of time. I personally would like to see that, we may see nothing at all, we may see a medical call or something, but I would really like to see if there's, uh, an establishment that does get frequent calls, I'd, I'd like to at least have that on our radar to watch for, for future, that's me personally.
Okay, certainly, I can get with the sheriff and see what he can come up with prior to the next meeting, if that is okay.
Yep.
Do you know how many of those licenses are full, and how many of them are bar and grill and restaurants?
Majority of them are full, um, we have a couple, uh, county malt beverage, but the majority of them are full licenses, and that'll be in my report to the commissioners on the twenty-first. But if you need more information, I could certainly provide it to you before then.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, um, I didn't, uh, Charmaine, for the agenda, uh, that we have in front of us tonight, I didn't have any questions on, on those who are want anything taken off the consent agenda. Um, we have, uh, a Wyoming Supreme Court case, I was just talking to Commissioner Milne about Campbell County versus Wyoming horse racing in Wyoming Downs, um, in Supreme Court, uh, January thirty-first came out with its opinion that county commissioners have authority to approve or deny, um, a proposed location for off-track horse racing, but beyond that, don't have any control to revoke, uh, or anything else, so I, I think that, uh, the gaming commission and the Supreme Court says has sole authority uh, for the administration revocation, once the county commissioners give their initial approval, so I think that underscores the importance of, um, you know, making the, the best decision we possibly can, uh, at the beginning, um, and one of the questions I had, um, is whether we want to consider some sort of criteria or regulation or rate resolution, I guess it'd be, um, potentially some criteria that would help us, um, not be arbitrating capricious when, you know, these applications come in front of us, now, I don't know, maybe we're at saturation, we're not gonna have any of these things come in front of us, but I, I think we will in the future, and it, we're gonna be on thin ice if we say yes to one guy and no to the next guy without some basis uh, for doing that, um, you know, just kinda shooting from the hip is not where we want to be to defend our position in court if it were to come to that, so, I didn't know Charmaine if, um, and I don't think this is a front burner issue, but if, if we could do some sort of survey of the other counties out there, and we can ask, uh, WCCA, um, if any counties have promulgated any sort of, um, uh, r- r- resolution regulations that pertain to this, uh, to gaming, what?
Some sort of guidance.
Yeah, and, and maybe it'll be a go-by so we don't have to reinvent the wheel, um, but it, it would be, I think, at least wise to have, um, to ge- to have this on our radar.
If, I can add to that, Peter, I, I had lunch with a gentleman that is involved in, in the horse racing industry this past week, we had that exact same discussion, and, and in all honesty, when this all began, what it should have done is followed right along suit with retail liquor license or liquor license, um, being given out per capita, there would be only so many given out, and then we wouldn't end up in the situation where we are now, where we have them popping up all over the place, so. Uh, I, I, I agree with you, I, I've been hearing a lot lately about where we are oversaturated, getting there quickly, and so, I, I think it's very well worth a discussion on what other counties have done and what we should be looking at doing.
So, there, there's no limitation on?
Not, not right now.
I think we can say health, safety, and welfare are, you know, way against this one going in this location, and maybe it'll be a black and white case where somebody's proposing something stupid, but I think more likely it'll be somebody with a legitimate proposal, and then, you know, depending upon what the public thinks about it, what we think about it, having to make a decision, I just, I, I guess, I don't think we gotta have criteria and guidance and standards, but I'd sure like to, you know, consider having them and then electing that, that know we're okay, or saying, you know, it actually makes, uh, makes sense to have.
And, Mr. Chair, that makes a lot of sense, the, the key thing is following, following them if you adopt them, um, and I toss that out there just because the, um, purchasing policy sometimes, um, is tricky for people to work with.
Pick and fly. Not to work, no, I, I. Uh, Mr. Chairman, and, and this is also on, uh, Charmaine, uh, county attorney office, um, issue. Yesterday, I met with, um, Tom Popolick and Justin Smith over at the library with a, um, couple of board members and the, um, Lisa, the, uh, executive director, and there's kind, there's a crisis right now uh, that we need to take care of, and that is that the fire alarm system, um, is not only deficient, but it's, for all intents and purposes, it's been red-tagged by the, um, city fire department, um, and we have to replace it. It, it's impossible at this point to find components, it's impossible to, um, kind of do Band-Aids. Um, back of the napkin wag is that this is a, uh, turn fifty thousand to five hundred thousand dollar item. Um, and, you know, I, I think that while we might not want to spend money on a facility that has a limited amount of time, um, left as our public library, I mean, who knows, maybe a limited amount of time is, you know, five years, or maybe it's ten, but, but whatever the case is, um, this is an issue that isn't gonna wait five or ten years, and so.
What's this?
Uh, I think we need to move immediately
A hundred bucks.
to put together an RFP, um, so that we get, uh, we can solicit some, some bids on replacing the system, uh, the L P alarm system. Yeah, they said two hundred fifty thousand minimum, and it could be up to five hundred thousand.
Why don't we just start building a new, new library?
I, I think I'd love to do that, but I don't know how we pay for it, um, I have some ideas where it'd go, but the health department's currently operating out of that location, and, and so, um, yeah, no, I, I, that'd be a great solution, but I think that there's just no ti- the, the overlap isn't gonna be, the timing's not gonna be right.
So then you did, so you gotta spend the money on the, on the fire alarm, right?
I didn't, didn't.
So you have to just have, have the fire alarm fixed, whether it's two fifty to five hundred, that's the end of the story, right?
It has to be replaced, um, not fixed, and we have to go through the process because of the dollars involved on it, and, and it, one of the things I mentioned to, um, Tom and Justin and, and the library folks was that if we can not do the absolute bare minimum, but maybe we'll recoup some of that investment through the sale of that property someday, because it is a more current, um, alarm system, I, I don't know if that's, you know, ten percent or eighty percent of the cost, I, I think it'd be in between that at best, but, um, I, I think we have to move forward with it, and I have some RFP forms, um, they don't really fit the one of the sort of locomobile, so that's project specific, investor for building, you know, building projects, capital construction. Um, so, uh, Lisa and I have exchanged an email, and I, I have some forms to send your way, but, uh, to maybe, um, save you some time, but I think that's where, that's my report from library.
So I have a question on that, on the building itself, is that, does the county own that outright?
Yes, yes.
Uh, because I've, I've got conflicting stuff where they said it was a family that owned it, that if we ever vacate, he would go back to them.
It's a county facility, a hundred percent.
All right.
Thing about it is, with, with.
Well, well, let's, um, Ken, um, was this the property that has a reverter clause from the early nineteen hundreds? Um, that, uh, Ken Bar, um, I think on behalf of the library was looking at to ensure that there weren't gonna be any hiccups in that respect, that might be, it might be free and clear, but there might be this issue, and, and I can pull up on that, you said.
And that's the part, and my understanding is that that's only, that doesn't include the entire building, but it, it includes part of the building as far as that stuff, the additional stuff that they had added on. That's, that's what I understood, but I don't know if it was reverter clause or what it was.
And, Mr. Chair, I, I might have, um, done a memo or some research on this in the past that I can pull up to give us a starting point.
Okay, that'd be great.
Sure. Regardless of whatever, it's a health, safety issue with public building. We need to just get the RFPs, we need to have more educated, um, point where we make the decision.
What happened with, uh, the city and Justin saying that we could replace portions of this panel and get everything up and running, is it is grandfathered? That was the last I had heard, was that we could actually, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying bare minimum, I'm just saying instead of replacing the entire panel, that's, that's what Justin had said, was that we could, we could actually go in there and replace portions of it, and it may, it's old enough at this point in time that that may not even be feasible, we may not even be able to get, be able to get the parts or anything else, so I'm just, um, I know that that was, uh, that was first redlined back in two thousand and three. That's when there was problems that were first arose, uh, over there, and to the best of my knowledge, nothing has been followed through until, till now, so I'm, I'm just asking, I don't, I don't, I don't know what the solution is. We do need to fix it. We need to get something going.
Does it just not work now? Is that it?
Okay. It, Justin would say, and Dave would understand, there are both input and output issues. Basically, it works in some areas and it doesn't work in other areas. This, so, first of all, Dave, you're right that Fred and Tom were going to look into getting some componentry and replacing some parts and pieces. That's not possible based on all of, based on Fred's research and based on one or, I think two, fire alarm companies, the big ones, I think, Rocky, anyway. And they said it's no longer, it's, it's obviously, it's no longer serviceable, no parts, and we're not working on it anymore, kind of stuff. So, it sounds like in the last forty-five days, that option has come off the table. And that the fire, fire marshal, or I'm sorry, Deputy Chief Garvin acknowledges that the conversations with those companies have taken place and that therefore it has to be replaced. That's his current letter. The, the panel was identified, or the, the whole fire alarm system and, I think sprinkler system was identified in 2013 as being, having safety issues and needing to be replaced and apparently, or at least updated. And apparently, you know, with the one cent failures or the library, you know, additional cent failures and with some of these things that they were kind of hoping they wouldn't have to get to this point, but they really never invested any money into this system in the last nine years. So, it's just finally, we're at the point where they've got to do something. Panel itself is from the seventies, I guess. I've got pictures too.
We're gonna have, we're gonna have to get it fixed. I mean, that, that, I don't think that has ever been a question. It was just a matter of what we were going to have to do to get it operational. And we were hoping for the best, and obviously, that's not going to be the case, so.
Well, we'll see what the proposals come back at, so. Everybody's good moving forward with the RFP then?
I'll work with Charmaine and get you this one. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Peter, just a question. Do you think, do you think that, do you think that the library can be rebuilt during your term this time? I'm just asking that.
In, in four years?
Yeah.
I don't know. Wouldn't that be great?
It would be. I, I'm just curious about the rebuilding of it, is all.
Yeah. With, again, with the timing and the health department, the source gas lot and all these other things that have to come together, it's going to be tough for it to be, for both of those buildings to be done within four years.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
Charmaine, I believe the chairman had a question on the bathhouse roof replacement. Being open-ended, did that get fixed?
So, we made, we made a change on the bathhouse contract itself, correct? On the, did we put a date on there for a completion date?
So, I didn't make any changes. I suggested changes to you and didn't hear back. So, I don't know if I missed your email, but I can, I can make some changes before the meeting and put in a deadline and remove the contrived increase clause.
Yeah, so we talked about putting another date in there. We were talking about in May, I believe it was, was the completion date on it?
Right.
But then we would need to send that back to him for changes. We wouldn't be able to have that discussion here tonight or approve it because he may or may not agree to the changes that have been made.
That's, that's true. Another way to look at it is you've approved this contract, and if he wants it, he can sign it, or he can suggest changes and we bring it back.
I like, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I like the idea of saying, here you go. I think there's pressure on somebody, it's like, how bad you want it. So, in this case, I wouldn't mind that.
Okay. Is everybody good? Wasn't it made, right before Memorial Day was the completion date? The only reason that that suggestion was made is it was left open-ended, and you could complete it in a, I don't remember how it was worded, but it was like a reasonable amount of time, well, reasonable to one person, maybe, you know, three years from now, so.
I don't think people like that.
There is a reasonable person standard out there, but, but I understood what you said, and just before Memorial Day seemed to fit well for this one in particular.
It's not that big of a roof, so. Okay, if we can make that change on there, and then I think I, if everybody else agrees, if we can get it done, we'll just put it through tonight and see if the contractor wants to re-sign it.
Okay, and just that one change? Just the deadline to be done?
Just the deadline and then the typos that we talked about, but other than that?
And for the record, those were not my typos.
Okay.
They, it was, I don't know if you're familiar with OCR, PD, you know, turning a document, a PDF searchable?
Right.
Sometimes that happens. When you do that, then it does all sorts of weird stuff. I know well it's not, it's not spelled with exclamation points.
Yeah, I really don't care where it went wrong. I just want to put out a good product that makes us look professional on our end. That's the only reason I brought it up, so.
I'm glad you caught it, and I talked to Michelle about, about it, I, about the problem with the.
Okay.
Is there, the other question I had, Charmaine, is there anything on the public hearings for the zoning or anything that, any concerns that we need to be aware of?
I, I don't think so.
Okay. And the one that was tabled is, is good to go then, or are we going to re-table it?
Let's see. As far as I know, it's, whatever caused it to be tabled has been taken care of. What I do know is Christie has not asked me any questions about these since we last talked.
Okay. That's all I had, sir.
Under the future meetings, so I've added the gaming or horse race licensing, we'll just have a discussion about that, find a time to put that in there. And then, also from Christie, she was talking that step one should have been a land use. We need to review that plan, so I'd like to, I'm going to put that on there too, so that we could find a, a time to put that in and start that review process, if everybody's good with that.
Do what?
The, the land use plan, she said it needed to be reviewed every, remember what it was, Charmaine? I think it's like every five years or something like that. We're at like year seven or nine or something, so it needs to be reviewed.
Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
I apologize, I, I may have missed the very first part of, of this, this land use plan discussion, but, so I, I think the process will necessarily involve the Planning and Zoning Commission, and, and I don't know if we're getting the cart before the horse a little bit, depending upon how much, how, how deep we dive into it with Christie. So I didn't know if you had some ideas on, on how, how, I guess, detailed we get in our discussions of this is wrong and that's, or if that should come up from Christie to P and Z and then, and then to us. I don't know.
And, sorry, Mr. Chair, we could start with like a memo or outline for you what the process is, so, so you see the steps and then you can decide how you want to proceed.
All, all I was doing was adding it to a future agenda item, not putting it on here saying that a month from now, we're going to start the process. I just wanted it as a placeholder on there so that we know that that's something needs to be done, it needs to be reviewed. And then whatever that process is, when we're ready to start that process, whoever is at the beginning of that, will put it in and say this is a date that process will begin. We may not see it for six months or whatever. But all I'm saying is I just want to, I want it to be on here so that we're aware of it because Christie has brought it up that it needs to be reviewed. It's been past time of being, needing to be reviewed, so.
And, and maybe Christie would want a little general guidance and direction from us before she, you know, dives off into it with P and Z, so, yeah.
A question has to do with, I think I got an email from Judy Jones, and they have, they had some information they wanted to present to us. What have you decided on that?
So that's being taken care of. Dave is the point of contact to sit down with them, along with Christie, get the information they have, and later down the road, when that comes up, we'll have their information, so. Okay?
So, Mr. Chairman, is this just a, what all do we want to add to the list?
Yeah.
I have, I have two, I have a number of questions for the treasurer, and I can go over a few of those with Nick or Tom individually, and, and if they warrant a more gentle discussion or if it's information that the rest of the commissioners might want, great. I think there's some really interesting stuff in the audit report, and if you haven't looked at all hundred and thirty whatever pages, there's some, some interesting stuff, both in terms of, you know, what they were forecasting, and remember, it's only as of June thirtieth of last year, so we don't really know where we stand, but Nick's reports are kind of indicating we're doing, doing pretty well, I think, in general. So I had some treasurer stuff, but I also think that, and I think maybe Commissioner Larry will agree with me, at some point, I think there needs to be more conversation about the healthcare system and the hospital and what all's going on in our, in our community. Some of that is probably going to come up on our radar fairly soon, because I think aren't we supposed to have a six-month review with the memorial board of trustees slash collective health trust slash WMC banner? So I think that last occurred, if I remember, in August. That's, that's my recollection, that it was either late August, early September. And so, you know, it might be a good opportunity for us to hear from the horse's mouth. Lance Porter and Beth Worthen now runs the collective, and, and I know I have some questions for them, and maybe you guys do too, but, but there, there's issues with patient care, there's issues with retention and recruitment of doctors and nurses, and, you know, whether we're losing too many and not attracting any new ones, and too much travelers and low contentance doctors, traveler nurses and low contentance doctors. You know, and Congress County Memorial Hospital has made a big move, play in Toronto County. And if we're looking for the best patient care and healthcare system, you know, in our, in our community, you know, I, I guess more competition might be better in some respects, but it is also Congress County, and their mission is to support Congress County, so it's a little awkward, I think, at the very least. And I've known the guys from Congress County Memorial Hospital for a number of years, and they're, they're good guys, and I think they're doing it with good motives and intent, and that they think there's a need, and they're trying to fill it, but, you know, they bought Summit, if you didn't know, they bought Summit last fall, and, you know, they're, they're talking about expanding it. And, and I don't know if, I think, I think maybe some of us are aware that, you know, they might try to approach us at some point as Toronto County and, and see if there's some participation in some bond issuance or some fund, you know, some financing of kind of a bigger picture thing. And, and so, there's a whole lot there, and I don't know where the conversation starts, but I, I know I've been hearing about it since I became a commissioner, you know, many moons ago, not, not that many, but nine months ago, you know, people were talking about issues. Anyway, I just, just don't want us to overlook that.
And you were a victim of those issues.
Huh?
And you were a victim of those issues.
I was a victim of those issues.
So, so it's, it's struck home.
Yeah, so I know firsthand, about some of them at least.
So can I weigh in on this just a little bit? So, when I went to WBI the other day and met with them, they sent me an email which says that basically they were in negotiations with Banner to finance the, help finance the indigent people that come in that need this help, that has always happened at Wyoming Medical Center. And they've been notified Banner isn't going to give them, do anything more for them. And so that's like a million three a year or something like that. And so they're, and they're a private, privately run organization as opposed to being a nonprofit like Banner. The other thing is whistleblower has said Dr. Wheeler has moved on, and he's one of the really stars of the neurology department up there. So, and I don't know whether we have any oversight. I, one, one time I thought Eric Nelson says there's something in that contract that gives us oversight on the sale, and another portion that says we could even buy it back. I don't think that's a likely move, but, which also brings me to the issue of Charmaine sent me some of the contract, which I haven't had a chance to take a look at quite yet, but the issue is, it's a public document, and I think it should be put on our website. And I mentioned that to Steve, I don't know how the rest of you feel, but it's a transparency issue for me. But I am going to look that over, and I know you will, but I don't know what our level of oversight is. And, which brings me then to another issue about oversight that we're having, and Steve is talking about some money that's going to come in for the, these drug sales that were made and what they did to our people, and how that money should be spent, which I'm, his basic idea, I'm, I'm fine with. The thing is the oversight. And what's happening to me and what I'm seeing now with these joint power boards is that they're, they're an antiquated vehicle, and I'm not so sure we should be thinking that we should create any more joint power boards because we really don't have oversight over them. We may have it, but maybe we have to exert some legal influence. But some cases that have really come out of, out of Delaware on, on corp, big corporations where they're saying that now the board of directors are personally liable for failure to exercise their duty of oversight. Now, we have a lot of duties of oversight. I don't know that anybody really realizes until you start looking at some of these statutes. But any one of these, any one of these committees that we go on as a liaison, I'm not too sure we don't have oversight over those committees. And that creates liabilities for people. So, we have a lot of liability issues going on with respect to the hospital, with respect to, with respect to joint powers boards, you know, for instance, the one you were just on, they want you to sign these agreements of confidentiality, and I've done a little research on it, and I've talked to Charmaine about it. I think it's a conflict for interest for us to do that. And if somebody hired me as their lawyer, I'd say, don't do that, don't sign those. Because you could, down the line, if something came back in front of the board here, where you'd sign the confidentiality agreement, you'd have a problem. So you boil all that in to what's happening up at the hospital. If we have some duty of oversight, I haven't seen us performing any duties of oversight with them. And then when I get it pointed out to me by WBI, all of these, all of these things that have been coasting along pretty good for indigent people are ending. And I think the contract with the hospital for indigent people ends pretty soon anyway. So that's all not going to go away, that's growing. So, that's all not gonna go away. That's growing and so, it's just another thing on our plate to give a lot of consideration to, as if we didn't have a lot of things on our plate.
So, you want to add that on there as far as talking to each one of these groups or? I've, I've had Lance reach out to me and I've already sat down to talk to him. I know he was reaching out to a few of you to, to talk to you about what's going on with Banner and, and how the play by Congress County is gonna affect them and, and whatnot, so. But, yeah.
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go talk to the Banner guy in the morning. I want to see what they have to say.
I, I think that we ought to check with Michelle and she can look into this next round of the normally regularly scheduled dog and pony show with the collective and with Banner. And that might be the first thing and then from there kind of see where, where it goes.
Good.
Mr. Chairman, my, of course, my question is about putting the contract in the website because the transparency issues, I've had several people want to look at it. I don't think it is gonna create any problem because anybody looks at it unless they understand those kind of contracts aren't gonna get much out of it, but it helps us if we have done our diligence of transparency.
Is there any issue with that, Charmaine, of putting that on the website?
None. It's a public record.
Question.
Peter.
There, there are hundreds of pages. There are documents that are entitled buyback agreement. There's one that's a buyback agreement. And so, oh wait, what, what does that mean? Well, it only means there's an option to buy back if Banner sells or substantially all of its assets or, you know, I mean, it, it seems to me that, are we gonna put all of them on the website? Or do we just allow it to be? And then what don't we put on the website? And, and I don't, I don't disagree that it's a public document, but I, I think it's if you're, like if you'd ask the federal government to put all of its contracts on their website. I mean, it's like, no, do a FOIA request or in, in our case, I think we're less formal than that most of the time. I know that the city used to be less formal and now it's, you have to do a dang FOIA request for everything. But, you know, in my mind, I, I guess Eileen toward, I don't want to confuse people and put, you know, stuff that doesn't have any relevance and then, or if we don't, put the two contracts on there because there are about seven or eight of them. If we don't put the two on there that, you know, we forgot about or don't think that they're really relevant to the 99% of the people out there, then they bust our chops because we didn't. So, in my opinion, I, I would lean toward letting people make their specific request and then Michelle or the county attorney's office can respond accordingly. Because for this person, it might be this contract or all of them. And for this person, it might only be one other contract. So, those are just my long-winded thoughts once again.
It doesn't matter to me. It can be posted or it can be FOIA. I mean, we've got the process. It doesn't take anything to do, do a request, but if, honestly, it doesn't, it's not a hill that I care to die on. I mean, it won't take, it wouldn't take much for Eileen to set up a new, a sub-page and just set up, you know, copy and put the PDFs on there.
Yeah. I mean, it doesn't make much difference to me. If people want to see it. I mean. I mean, we can give them electronic copy. It doesn't cost anything to do that, you know, or make it available to them.
I, I don't know what.
I mean, I wouldn't want a hard copy of that thing. I wouldn't want to kill that many trees, so, but.
Nobody does.
As far as what's found here is right. I mean, there's certain conditions before buyback come in. There's, it's, it's a private business in essence. Be just like county trying to tell you what to do with yours. We were landlords and that was it.
Mr. Chairman, just a thing though, Dave or Jim, they're a, they're a, they're a nonprofit corporation, so they're subject to a bunch of different legal rules?
No, no, I understand that. It, it was just an example.
The only thing I, the only reason I would kind of encourage us to do it is it just ends the discussion of transparency about us.
I don't care.
It's a polit, it's, it's a political issue, really.
Nine hundred, nine hundred pages won't take up that much space as far as the, I mean, I don't know.
Computer.
Sounds to me like you're good to move forward, so if we can get with Eileen, we'll make that happen.
All right. You want me to talk to Eileen? All right.
Yep. Then we'll just put it out there, so.
Mark, mark my words, since the last time we heard him. Where's the, and then we're gonna have people saying, "Well, we need to put this on there too and, well, we gotta have the current stuff, not just the old stuff." I, I, I agree that the more opportunities we have for the public to know what's going on and being transparent is a good thing. But I just think that sometimes things get, you know, the unintended consequences and complications. Anyway.
Well, I know when I've ever had to research something with the federal government and you look into that federal record and their, the volumes for one day is like this, uh, guess what happens? People quit looking. It's just too much for them. But if somebody says to me, "Well, what happened?" And there, I'd say, "It's on our website. Go take a look." I don't want to spend all day trying to, to explain it to anybody.
And they'll get through the first 50 pages and quit.
Yeah. Just, you know, go see what happened and it's just like.
You have a question. So, this is what you plan on putting on the agenda or whatever, right? So, looking at it, you said land use plan, land use plan and zoning resolution are two different animals. What I'd suggest is we have her come in to discuss not only potentially, you know, meaning the zoning or how that worked, but actually talk about the land use plan. It's a completely different document.
That's why it says Dallas next to it and then I put mine because.
Also, I got is this.
I'm writing, yeah, and I just wrote all this in.
But also subdivisions.
Okay.
We need to discuss all three of those.
Good.
And the nuisance.
Yep.
When are you gonna meet with?
It'll be a couple of weeks.
Potentially the fire.
The which? I didn't hear you.
The fire, urban interface thing.
So, I've.
If we've got enough time to do, discuss all those, but I imagine between the zoning, land use and the subdivision, we'll be pretty stacked at that point for.
And the nuisance.
And the nuisance. I'd say hold off on the nuisance and the fire until next time. Push that to the seventh or whatever.
No, 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 no. So, I'm just putting these down in future agenda items.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, you can list.
Okay, so add those on there.
You can list a thousand on there if you want, but, all right. So, I've got nuisance, gaming, land use.
Subdivision.
Subdivision. What else?
I don't know. I didn't really have.
The wildland fire interface.
Wildland fire.
Mr. Chairman, can you put the chaplain on there? I think that's a thing that might end up being something different than you ever thought.
All right. I'll put Chaplain on here for Dallas.
Thank you.
And then I also had audit, audit and treasurer questions I put on there too whenever you're ready for that.
One thing we need to keep on here too.
I think I'd like to hear your questions of Tom and his answers. Also.
It's Cathar Mountain Road too.
Yeah.
We need to, we need to get that. Charmaine, where, have we, have you got an estimated timeframe on when we'll get that?
Not just that, but also the investment reports.
Moving forward.
And those, where are those?
The easements for.
Cathar Mountain Road.
Oh, um. No, I, I don't have a time for that. Um. The end. I don't.
Yeah, because I know, I know, I know Mike's got a meet with DOT.
Yeah, and I talked to, I talked to my Kegler yesterday about what we need to do, so. I know it's, I know we need to get it done.
Yeah, it needs to be on the top.
Okay.
Top of the list, I guess, just because of the timeframe. That's the only reason why I'm saying that.
Okay.
So.
So, just think if we have it.
One other thing, and I don't know if we need to put this on this list or not, but I know Mike's gonna, he's way over his budget and we probably ought to have him come in and talk to us about equipment and game plans. I know they've, those guys have been busting their butts. They're not gonna work this weekend because they've been working every weekend since first of the year. And out there on Poison Spider, they've tried and tried and tried to get that opened up out. They were out there, out at Waltman yesterday and Rob Henry said that they went through with the grader as soon as they did behind it, it was blowing in behind them again, so. We've had some, Mike's got some ideas on, on things that we can do, but Poison Spider's, it's bad. They've lost a lot of cows out there already. I know a lot of, a lot of ranchers have lost cows all over the place this year, but.
Snow fences?
Well, it's a little late right now. Maybe that's something that we look at in the future, but, this is, I mean, it's just, this has been an exceptionally bad year as far as snow and everything else goes, but, we obviously, I mean, you guys have all seen the, the emails and that one's not even a bad one, so.
Supposed to be worse next year according to the almanac.
So, we are looking, we did, Glenn Januska offered up his spare blower out there to try to open up Poison Spider so we'd have two to do that, but his main one went down with a broken axle. So, not sure when that's gonna happen. But there's, there's about 12 miles of road out there that, that are impassable right now. From Spanos Ranch all the way up to Gas Hills, road just about is impassable due to drifts, so.
Okay. Anything else besides on the agenda? Do we have some executive session items? Because we still need to have time to get that contract fixed.
Right. Yes, yes, we do have some executive session items and yes, we need time to get that fixed. Just really quickly, I wanted to toss in, quite a while ago I drafted a policy for the county to sell its real property to interested parties. Right now, we don't have anything. Would it be all right if I like circulated that before the next work session?
Everybody good with that?
Sure.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, so we're done with the regular business. And so, if I can have somebody give me a motion to go into executive session. Led by Commissioner Laird, seconded by Commissioner North. Everybody in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, for discussion?
I think that the intention, because we're live streaming this, I, I believe, Michelle wanted us to make it clear that the work session will not come back in the session, so it's basically an adjournment of the work session in, and that we're moving into executive and so that we'll be turning off the video.
Yeah, that's what I was saying as far as leaving out a work session itself, but we will not be returning into a work session. It will end at this point in time and go into an executive session.
That's how it'll feel. Essentially, you'll go into the executive session. The only thing that'll happen when you come back is, is to adjourn.
Out of the executive session.
Right.
The purpose of YouTube.
There won't be.
There won't be.
Correct, correct.
Yep. Everybody's in favor?
Oh, sorry.
Hi, okay.